We'll get started this morning. We'll start with the benediction by Pastor David Oxley from Eagles Crest Fellowship, and then I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our Father who is in heaven, hallowed and holy, is your name. I pray today in this pivotal chamber of our beloved and celebrated Oklahoma City that your kingdom come and your will be done, here in our Oklahoma City metro as it is in heaven. I thank you for being humbled and honored to pray for these, your choice elected servant leaders of our city. As a pastor among hundreds of other pastors in our city, we pray as you've instructed us to pray for those in authority over us who serve and stand as guardians over us. We pray that you will bless each one who serves on this council. We pray you would bless each one of their family and their families. We pray that you would bless the work of their hands and the work of their hearts. As citizens of our beloved Oklahoma City, I pray that each one of us in this chamber on this Tuesday morning of September the ninth of 2014, that in a world of chaos and hopelessness, that we will be living containers of hope because we know the God of hope, and that that hope we contain will be poured out and shared freely and freshly, Lord, knowing that your hope is the anchor of our souls. I pray these things in your name, the God of all hope, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the name of the Holy Ghost, and everyone said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start our meeting, we're going to set aside some time just for the Employee and Teacher of the Month. We want to start with a 38-year veteran of the city of Oklahoma City, the Department of Public Works. Renita Crump is our Employee of the Month, and I just want to turn it over to her.
I want to thank everyone for coming out today, especially my employees. And today is my anniversary. I've worked for the city for 38 years, and I just want to thank you. I thoroughly enjoyed being an employee of the city, especially Public Works.
Thank you for your service. So Francis has resolution?
Whereas Renita Crump has been a city employee for 38 years and is a unit operations supervisor in the Streets Traffic and Drainage Maintenance Division of the Public Works Department. Whereas Renita supervises the day-to-day operations, including budgeting, scheduling, and personnel of six units: real road drainage, inlet cleaning, channel cleaning, improved drainage, unimproved drainage, and the Oklahoma River Maintenance. Whereas Renita is a natural leader and great supervisor, she is tough but fair. She cares about her crews and continuously works to get them the training and resources that they need to succeed. Whereas Renita is knowledgeable as an expert in her field and goes out of her way to educate her crews and others. If she does not have the answer to a question, she will research until she finds it. Whereas Renita shares information that crews need to know about the city and their operation, gives advice when asked, and is open to suggestions. Whereas Renita is organized and always prepared for whatever the day may bring. She is never too busy to talk to, meet with, or take phone calls. Whereas Renita is committed to providing the best service and stresses to her crews to do quality work and give good customer service. Whereas this council desires to recognize Renita Crump for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to her coworkers and the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Renita Crump, September 2014, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
I'll look for a motion. All in favor say aye. It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We'd also like to recognize Dr. Carol Fletcher Knight, who is our Teacher of the Month. She teaches Social Studies in the sixth to eighth grade at Northeast Academy, and I'll let you say just a word.
Well, I want to say thank you very much for this honor and recognition. I receive it gratefully on behalf of not only myself but other teachers who are in the trenches. They're dedicated, and I truly appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. We have a resolution?
Whereas Dr. Carol Fletcher Knight has been named Teacher of the Month by Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for September 2014. Whereas Dr. Fletcher Knight teaches ninth and 10th grade Social Studies at Northeast Academy for Health Sciences and Engineering Enterprise School. Whereas Dr. Carol Fletcher Knight was honored as the Rogers Middle School 2013-14 Building Teacher of the Year. Whereas Dr. Carol Fletcher Knight was honored as first runner-up for the 2014-15 Oklahoma City Public Schools District Teacher of the Year. Whereas Dr. Fletcher Knight is an education leader who seeks to inspire, support, and encourage other teachers. Whereas Dr. Fletcher Knight conducts herself as a consummate professional and dedicates herself to the service of her students. Whereas Dr. Fletcher Knight actively pursues relationships with the parents of her students and seeks to involve them in their child's education. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Dr. Carol Fletcher Knight on her selection as September 2014 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Can I look for a motion?
Yeah.
And vote. And the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. So we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Office of the Mayor, and we'll start with an economic development update by Roy Williams, President of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit of insight on some of the economic development activities taking place. I noticed you have a very thick packet, so you have a full agenda, so I'll be brief, but certainly be happy to entertain any questions if you might have any. About six things I want to quickly mention. We're getting ready to release our annual Business Retention and Expansion Report in late September, but I want to give you just a little bit of the preview of it. We're not quite finished. This year, this past 12 months, we interviewed 418 companies, which is almost a 40% increase over the number of companies we interviewed last year. And these 418 companies employ about 60,000 people. They're all primary job employers. 57% of these companies are headquartered here in Oklahoma City. 35% are headquartered outside of the state of Oklahoma, and 8% are headquartered outside of the United States. They represent a wide variety of business sectors, but the focus was on manufacturing, so about 40% of these companies are manufacturers. Another 17% are professional, scientific, or technical service companies. Both of those categories are very critical to our economy. The good news about this particular report we're going to release is that 44% of these companies increased employment during the last 12 months during the last year, and only 4% saw a decrease in employment. And over the next three years, 36 months, 37% of these companies anticipate either making a capital investment, adding space, acquiring real estate, or adding new jobs here in our market. As well, we assisted companies this year who announced over 4,500 new jobs at an average salary in excess of $40,000 annually. In surveying these people, we also asked them what their concerns are, and at the top of the list is their concern about access to talent, meaning the quality of the graduates that are coming out of K-12 system, as well as now their reliance on recruiting from outside of the market because of us not having enough talent within our market. We also hear concerns about our transportation system, particularly our interstate system and local roads. In addition to the jobs I mentioned from existing businesses that we surveyed, we worked with another nine companies this year to bring in excess of 2,600 new announced jobs to the area. The average salary of these new jobs was nearly $54,000 annually, which is about 37% higher than what the average metro wage is currently here. Combined, these companies and these existing companies have invested nearly $430 million in capital investment in our region. With regard to retail activity, that continues to be very high. Last year, we worked with 132 brokers, retailers, or developers, and we hosted 11 site visits of these entities. So our meetings with the ICSC recon continue to bear fruit in this particular area. Another major economic development project, and it's on your agenda today, is Tinker. We've been working on that project now for a number of years, and that's the expansion of Tinker Air Force Base through the acquisition of the BNSF rail yard. The development of this particular project, and the complexity of it, and the multi-jurisdictional partnership that was created, is just a phenomenal example of how our community works in partnership to create jobs and to support vital economic drivers. Over 1,300 new jobs will be created in this particular project, and over a $1.5 billion capital investment will occur. And when you think about it, what we're actually doing are creating jobs for children that are not yet born. There will be people working in these jobs for decades, so it is truly a visionary initiative on the part of a lot of people, and I deeply appreciate the commitment and the work the city has done in this particular project. It is one-of-a-kind activity. Recently, we returned from our annual inner-city visit, and I want to thank Councilman Pettis, who was on the visit. Councilwoman Salyer was on the visit as well, but she's not here. But we had 65 people who traveled for three days with us to Salt Lake City in August. Some of the highlights and some of the reasons we went there, we wanted to visit their Major League Soccer Stadium. They have a relatively new one, their Rio Tinto Stadium, and that was a chance for us to see what kind of facilities exist in the MSL because there's interest locally in pursuing that. So we wanted to see what kind of facilities really are built to handle that kind of league competition. Another facility we visited is their Expo Center, a fairly new construction project, and it's very, very similar to the one that is going to be built at the Fair Park. Basically the same size, basically the same layout. So we got to see kind of what our future holds and what that kind of facility looks like, and to hear from the staff there as to how it works and how they utilize it. We also received a very enlightening session on something that we knew absolutely nothing about, and most people knew nothing about, and it's called social impact bonds, and how the Salt Lake City community is using this tool to address concerns about early childhood education. There's a unique partnership with the United Way and Goldman Sachs, who actually have created an investment bond program that's extremely complex, but it is to identify and deal with problems with children who have special needs in early childhood education. In fact, what we learned, too, is there is a waiting list of companies who want to purchase these bonds because these bonds actually are a return on investment. It's a very novel way to think about education and saving long-term costs for children who don't get brought up to speed early in their childhood. One of the most eye-opening visits we had in Salt Lake was their transit system, and really delving deep into it. They've been very aggressive in the expansion of that system. They have added over 140 miles in only 14 years, so it's pretty impressive. What we learned and what we continue to learn is that these visits are really important to bring people up to speed as to what our competition is doing, and a reminder that even though there's a lot of good things that are happening here, our competition doesn't wait on us. We have to see what they're doing and learn from not only their insight but from their mistakes as well. In terms of planning ahead, we continue to benchmark against other cities. In fact, we have two consulting groups now under contract with us. One is looking at identifying best practices nationally, primarily in talent recruitment and workforce development and infrastructure development. And then secondly, we're working with a consultant looking at incentives. Right now, from a state standpoint, the incentives are being looked at very closely, and we want to make sure we have a good third-party comprehensive look at what our state incentives are and the competitiveness of them. Last two things I'll mention. September the 12th, we have our Friday Forum, and downtown housing is our topic. We invite you to attend that. And then on September 22nd, we have our Annual Metro 50 Awards, where we recognize the fastest-growing companies in the metro and name the fastest-growing one. So it's a really exciting time. There'll be a lot of celebration. With that, I'll conclude, and take any questions anybody might have.
Roy, in regards to doing a survey of best practices, could you consider doing a study of the best larger metropolitan areas in regards to their public education system? For example, I think the city of Boston is often looked upon as a city that's made some significant improvements in their overall public education, because that would lead towards, you know, development of a workforce better suited for today's jobs.
Yeah, and the slant we're taking on all this is what is the role of an organization like ours in it as opposed to just the overall picture? What role can the business community play in helping make a difference? But in fact, we have already had the company look at Austin, so we are looking at that.
I think there'd be a lot of interest from the business community in general, and I think you'd get a lot of support from our local business community to assist in that regards if they saw proven examples of how things can be changed to improve the overall education system.
That will definitely be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question just about Salt Lake. Recently, I saw a tweet that you were writing our bus system, which brought a big smile.
Here.
Yeah.
Also wrote it in Salt Lake.
Oh, also in Salt Lake. What lessons would you say? Because many people say Salt Lake is the model that we may want to emulate, or closest in terms of political climate, et cetera. Any lessons in terms of the streetcar or transit as we move forward?
I think the lesson everybody came away with, and Councilman Pettis can comment on this, is Salt Lake addressed this problem before it was a problem. They're one of the few cities who got ahead of transit. They didn't have a problem, a congestion problem, when they began building their transit. And everyone tends to think they were preparing for the Olympics, but they weren't. They were already building their transit infrastructure before they even bid on or successfully got the Olympics. So that was a ready plan. But they looked very far down the road and saw that at some point in time congestion was going to impede their ability to be a quality community. And so they embarked on a regional strategy for transit development, and I think that was sort of the lesson we learned, that most other cities wait until it's horrible.
Some would say they got some of our transit dollars, maybe. But in terms of the streetcar, there are maybe 10 cities online. Very few cities, if any, are able to have the operational dollars to get up to a 15-minute frequency that many would say you need to attract transit riders. Salt Lake City, I don't think, has ever gotten there. Are they worried that it's becoming a tool just for tourists, or is it actually a tool for mobility of transit riders?
Well, their downtown streetcar is free, so it doesn't generate any revenue for them in terms of ridership. There's other kinds of sources of it. So they see it really as just mobility and alternative transportation downtown. There are other transit systems that go off from it. You know, they have various revenue streams. It doesn't pay for itself. No transit system does. No highways do. No airports do.
But I guess the question is, do they see it as getting their citizenry around Salt Lake City, or is it more for tourists?
Yes. No, they don't have access, for instance, to Park City. And Park City is their tourism destination, the ski resort. So, no, they see it much more for the local -- and the people we saw on it were local people.
Okay.
Yeah, it was definitely, to add on to Roy's comments, it was definitely good to see local people using the downtown streetcar. Some of their light rail actually went through some neighborhoods, so that was also good to see. But it was local people who were going to work or school, taking their kids to daycare. So it was definitely used big time, and I think that was pretty much the times we got on, that was at capacity. And you're talking about people from diverse backgrounds using it, so it was definitely great to see.
When you say it was at capacity, are you talking about the light rail or the streetcar?
I would have to say both. It was standing room only.
Great.
And it was standing room only before we got in.
Okay. Pat, did you have a? I have one additional question. I just wanted -- yesterday in the Tulsa World, the CEO of St. John's in Tulsa remarked on how the hospital system in Tulsa has been hit by agreeing during the time of the Affordable Care Act negotiations to take decreases in Medicare, thinking that with Medicaid expansion, you would make up the difference. And now, with that not happening in Oklahoma, you're seeing a tremendous hit in terms of job loss, economic development. Right or wrong, are you hearing the same thing from Oklahoma City hospitals that the lack of Medicaid expansion in Oklahoma, or if we had Medicaid expansion, would lead to job creation in Oklahoma City? And maybe a disconnect between that the federal dollars that we're talking about today going to Tinker seem to be okay, but federal dollars for health care takes on a different aura?
We hear the same comments from the medical providers here, from the five major hospitals here, as was said in the Tulsa World. Yes, we hear the exact same thing, that they are having to figure out what to do with a whole lot less in terms of revenues.
And that it specifically would lead to job creation if that were to take place?
Well, I'm not so sure it would lead to job creation. It might stop job cuts.
Okay.
They haven't gone so far as to saying it would increase jobs, but they said it would certainly cause them to reduce their workforce without the reimbursements.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
That brings us to D and E, which are appointments. Look for a motion on D and E.
I'm excited.
And we'll vote.
Pass.
Look for a motion and vote. It passes unanimously. Request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, a couple this morning on Page 31 and 32. On Page 31, under Item 8P1, Item H 502 Oakdale Drive, we ask that that be stricken. We need a re-notify. Item N 3600 Northeast 146th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner's removed. Item R 521 Southwest 149th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving on to Item 8Q1, Item F 1221 Standish Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner's secured. Item J 1735 Northeast 14th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M 3328 Northeast 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to Page 32, Item O 2909 Northwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And Item Q 3204 Northwest 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken. That is now occupied.
We'll have a recess to the council meeting and move ahead with the MFA. Any questions or comments on the MFA? Move that for a vote. All in favor? It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCSMFA, OC-MFA, and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Any comments?
Quick question, Mr. Vice Mayor. Lincoln Park Clubhouse will be finished when?
Last, I haven't been updated recently. Last I heard was this fall, so I think in the October timeframe, but I have not gotten an update. Maybe Eric can come in and give us an update when he comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a movement, a motion?
Move the address.
Second. Oh, Eric, did you want to?
Can you give us an update on the completion date on the Lincoln Golf Course?
Yeah, things have actually gone extremely well. We're looking at either late October or early November of this year.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a question. A funding project. We had some GL bond money. And revenue bonds, seven million dollars. Roll across the project, seven million dollars. They're going to spend the rest?
I don't know that I can answer that. I mean, I can research and find out.
If I recall correctly, they're going to use the GL dollars first, and then the revenue bonds were for that project. And I don't know about if there's leftover revenue bonds, what the purpose of those were, if they'd be refunded, or what the purpose are. Moving back to you on that.
Thank you.
Well, that's the next project, but I don't know if those revenue bonds were set aside for early one or not.
Ready to vote? All in favor? It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA and convene, thank you, Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Any comments?
Yeah.
All in favor? It passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT, and we convene the council meeting with the consent docket. I think we have one citizen, and I think we have two presentations.
Two presentations on mass projects, and we have some people from the Skirvin that want to talk for a second about the historic preservation easement on the Skirvin Hotel.
Who should we start with?
I'll start with the Skirvin Hotel. I think we've got some up there. There's some Marcus Hotels that are here today. Kathy O'Connor's coming up, but I think we've got Brent Sunstrom.
I'm sorry that Mr. Sunstrom didn't make it this morning, so I apologize for that. The item on your agenda is to approve a preservation easement for the Skirvin Hotel. The easement allows us to protect that cultural resource, that historic resource, in perpetuity, and is something that was a part of the original agreement with the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority.
All right. Well, I guess we don't have people from Marcus Hotel here this morning.
Does the easement allow the Skirvin Hotel to decay?
The question is, will it allow the Skirvin to expand someday if they have a desire to do so?
Yes, I don't think it inhibits. It just protects the historic structure, the facade of the historic structure. So if they wanted to expand, it would be new construction, and I don't think it would impact that.
So the easement is not related to the specific description of property, building itself?
It's related to the specific historic facade of the original hotel.
Thank you. All right, and on the two, three projects, I think we've got Alan Brown here from FSB to talk about the contract award at the fairgrounds for the Expo Building, just two days before the kickoff of the state fair.
Thank you. Good morning. Alan Brown with FSB. We have a positive report on the Expo Building at the fairgrounds.
We have a positive report on the, on the Expo Building at the fairgrounds. Just want to review real quickly the project. This is the scope of the project. It's 279,000 square feet, of which the Expo Hall, the main space, is 201,000 square feet, which was a critical number, it would be over 200,000 for trade shows and exhibitions. And you can see a lobby, large lobby area that serves as a pre-function space, plus support space, a full kitchen, restrooms, concessions, and other service spaces. Some of the features, the exhibition hall itself is 300 feet by 672 feet, about three football fields. And it's a 40, it says 45-foot clear height, that is the tallest point in the building, 45 feet. Clear at the eve line is approximately 35 feet inside the building. The building can serve over 2,000 people at a plated dinner. That's the capacity of the kitchen, more than the space. And just review real quickly the design. This is the Expo Building on the left. Phase one of the fairgrounds improvements is at the right. Parking improvements, our building, it takes the place partially of the TNT building plus parking. And we're also redoing the parking to the southeast of the new building. As part of the project, the entry boulevard, Gordon Cooper entrance, will be landscaped with new trees. And then some views of the, of the new building, bird's eye view from the southeast. Just want to review a little bit about how the building's going to be used. This is a typical trade show, the maximum amount of 10 by 10 trade booths, around 900 plus exhibitors. And then typical large shows at the Expo Hall will host boat RV show, an auto show, combination of, of booths and displays. This is the view from the entry, from the southeast, as if you're coming up Gordon Cooper entrance. You can see the main entrance on the left, the lobby space. And then as you approach from the south, this is the main entrance view. The upper portion, the materials are metal, burnished concrete block, glass, and a translucent panel you can see on the top that bring a lot of light into the lobby space. This is the northwest approach or entrance, across the street from the arena to provide access, good access from that side. There's also another entrance on the northeast side. This is the floor plan. The large green area obviously is the Expo Hall, the 201,000 square feet. And at the bottom is the lobby space, the yellow, that is sort of a pre-function space. In the back is, the light yellow is the service corridor that allows access from the kitchen, which is pink, into the hall. And then on all sides is flanked by restrooms and vending areas. There's also storage space in the, in the north side, plus truck docks and service areas. And then inside, this is the main lobby, the sort of pre-function space for the exhibit hall itself. Again, the major materials are polished colored concrete floor, a metal, glass, and translucent panel exterior wall. And then the steel structure with acoustical, you can see an acoustical cloud for the ceiling. And around the interior side is the burnished concrete block that I mentioned. Inside the Expo Hall itself, this is the view showing a farm implement show. And I mentioned the clear height, that's at the left side at the bottom of the structure, that's 35 feet. And that's, that is a polished concrete floor with a hardener for the large equipment that, that comes in and out of that space. As part of the project, we have an allowance for wayfinding for the fairgrounds, for the building itself, but to improve the directional signage at the fairgrounds. And this is a system, a concept that we developed, that'll be implemented as part of this project and maybe extended to the, to the rest of the fairgrounds. And now for the, I guess the good part, the bid results. We had eight bidders in the project. The variance on the bids were 3% to 12% below the final estimate. We had one very aggressive bid, which is the 12, and we accepted the 12%, the city accepted the 12% below, recommending that, below the estimate. So you can see there the, the numbers, construction base estimate was 41 million, a little over 41 million. The average bid was around 39 million, and the accepted bid was a little over 36, 36 million, 25,000, 12% below. We had four ad alternates that, just in case, that didn't bid as well. And the city's going to be able to take all four of those alternates in the construction contract. So you can see the total recommended construction award on the right is 36 million, 920,000 dollars. And then just to review the schedule, it was advertised for bid in July, received the bids the end of, of, excuse me, June, received the bids at the end of July, and now we're at city council approval on the 9th. And hopefully, we'll give the notice, the city will give the notice to proceed tomorrow on the 10th. Anticipated substantial completion is the end of February in 2016. And that, is it? Any questions?
Alan, would you refresh my memory? On the parking lot itself, will there be any landscaping? Or is this just going to be a big, vast expansive asphalt?
The parking itself, that's where they set the carnival and other events, does not have landscaping. We focused it on the entry and other green spaces on the, on the fairgrounds.
They're proposing another asphalt option out there?
The concrete or asphalt, I can't remember which one. Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question, or really a comment, but with the estimate of the total construction cost being 43.8 million, and the accepted bid was 36.9 million, that's roughly, I don't know, six, seven million savings.
About four, five, yeah.
Okay. That doesn't get as much attention, it appears, as when we had an overrun just a couple of weeks ago. So do the savings here offset some of the overruns, Jim, with respect to the Whitewater facility?
You know, that's a, a great question as we, as we go forward on it. Obviously, we have a contingency for MAPS III that was out there, and then we put 30 million into it, and we've had revenues exceed it. So we do have some, some contingency monies that are out there. I think that's a policy decision that we're going to have to deal with, as we do have overruns in some of the areas and underruns in some of those other areas.
Council, I forgot to mention also that there are four allowances still in the project to be bid that were pulled out of the construction contract. We have FF and E, we have a Wi-Fi system, we have a security system, and we have the wayfinding system. That's, I think the total of that is around 2 million or something close to that. So we still have those within the project, so it's not quite as, you know, much leftover, but still it's under budget.
But this is good news, and we're going to be under, you know, under budget on, on this one. One of the, the problems that we have with MAPS III is we've got, the projects are a little bit in silos, and so everybody has their own money. And I, I think the subcommittee believes that that is their money to deal with, just like the, the river subcommittee felt that they had to come up with, with their own solution to come up with, with the gap in the Whitewater course. And so there's an overall, bigger picture than that, that is responsibility of the councils to address.
Yeah, I don't think it's the right approach, though, to take a silo approach.
I understand that.
And say, well, you all figure out how to come up with the shortfall, and you all just keep the excess and build another building or something like that. I think we should look at the MAPS III projects as a whole.
Yeah.
And, and so, again, I'm just.
I, I agree with that.
Suggesting.
But we've created subcommittees that have ownership of their, they have very strong ownership of their individual projects.
Right. But still, now, explain to me, when I added that, it comes to about a $7 million difference.
That's the, that's the allowances that are left that aren't on the slide. There is on that slide, that amount, but the four allowances that I just mentioned are still to be bid as part of the project.
That was total construction, not specific project construction.
Right. The general construction contract will be this, and we have those four allowances that I just mentioned, that we still have to.
Wasn't the actual, this project actually closer to $3 million under budget?
I think it's approximately, approximately four.
Okay.
Four million, when you add the allowances back in.
So, so the construction budget itself, there's, yeah, I understand.
43 less 36 comes to about seven.
I understand that.
We've done away with common core. We're going back to the old way of doing math.
But let's be, let's be clear on that. That was a total project with some of the other, other things out there. We probably should have had the, the slide show the project only, on this construction project only, which was a lesser, a subset of the larger number.
Yes.
So, so what are you saying? If you think of it like Lincoln Park, they'll find a way to spend them.
So if, if those, we wouldn't be doing or even considering those allowances if the, these bids would have been closer to it. If that's right, I'm trying to figure out what the allowance has actually meant.
Yes, or well, the. That's why we have alternates, is to give us flexibility at the contract award. When we come in there, we really don't know where it's going to come in, and we want to make sure we, we do it. So we have flexibility. We have a lot of base things that have to be in the project, and then we have some desires beyond that. And, and then we have desires beyond that that we don't even design and bid. And so we, we put those middleless desires in and try to get them, and it's all good things for the project that we've got in those alternates. And it's also good things that we're putting in with the wayfinding and the Wi-Fi and, and the additional signage on, on, on the building itself are, are good add-ons that we'll come back with. And FF and E, of course, we have to do.
Okay, so what's the difference between an allowance and an alternate? Because we already have four alternates.
That's a good question. There was a slide that showed more of that. Allowances were something outside the general construction bid, the contractor did not provide, like FF and E, and as I mentioned a second ago, those four items, security, Wi-Fi, and the wayfinding. And that was always pulled out separate. And then we also had the four alternates that were, if the bids went well, hopefully the city would get all, all of that, and they did. So it's kind of complicated, but allowances were pulled out of the general construction bid, the alternates are part of the construction bid.
Okay, but, and I know Mr. O'Toole's here, so he may not think of it in the same way, but if we've got some alternatives, don't we need to take a broader view and say, well, this alternative in and of itself is nice, and it would really add to this particular project, but the fact that we've got a shortage over here in the Whitewater facility, bringing back one of those items could be considered more important than adding one of these add-ons to this particular facility? That's why I'm just saying, don't we need to take a broader view when we look at these things as we move forward? Now that we're dealing with three old dollars and cents.
The alternates, we would, are, are things we really want into the project, but we cut them out to give us flexibility in case the bids come, come in, come, come in low.
Right.
And such, so, I mean.
Well, and I don't have an answer, I'm just raising some questions.
Yeah. It's always difficult when you're balancing additional items on, on the different projects, when you'll take a look at them at a global scale, is a fountain at the Whitewater more important than the Wi-Fi at, at, at the fairgrounds?
Right.
More important than an architectural feature at the new park, you know, as opposed to more space for, for the convention center compared to more square, more learning footage of sidewalks? Those are, those are all important things, but trying to prioritize those, and so that's why we have with the budgets identified for each of the individual projects.
Thank you.
It's a good problem to have, I would say.
So.
It's a better project, a better problem than we had two weeks ago. Any other questions?
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
We, we do have one citizen to be heard on this item, which before we move on, maybe we can do that now, Alan Hadley. Alan, could you just give your address for the record?
I'm the president, Metro Tech Electric, and our physical address is 3344 South Ann Arbor Avenue, here in Oklahoma City. I'm here today to oppose the award of this project. I think you guys and women are, have a responsibility, the taxpayers, to award this to the lowest responsible bidder. This bid is, just like the gentleman from FSB said, is considerably below the rest of the bids received on bid day. I'm not here to complain, as I'm electrical subcontractor that bid this job. I was the low responsible bidder with every general contractor except Atlas Construction. Up until just last week, I had a letter of intent from Atlas to be awarded this project for a price they chose for me to do this job for, not the price that I chose, that I turned in on bid day. I think that's, that's bid shopping. There is some legal definition, I'm not an attorney to what bid shopping is. And I have also had an email from Atlas emailing me one of my competitor's bids on August the 8th, a week and a day after the job bid, requesting that I do this project for that price. That particular subcontractor bid several of the other general contractors that bid the job, turned in several verbal bids prior to the job, according to all the general contractors that I've spoken to, pulled his bid verbally, and did, according to Atlas, they never had a, a bid in writing from him until August the 8th. To me, that's a, that's not a responsible bid for the taxpayers. And I think it needs to be looked into by you as the city council and the architect as FSB.
We follow the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act. We don't get behind the bids of the contractors. A contractor is deemed to be qualified if they are prequal, eligible to bid if they are pre-qualified. Atlas is pre-qualified and has done a number of projects with the city. He had the lowest bid by several million dollars as we go forward. I'm sorry you got a dispute over the contract award, but that's behind the bid and, and something that'd be difficult for us to get into. If you have a civil action against Atlas, you, you may.
But as the city council, don't you all have any responsibility to what goes on after? This general contractor has left $3 million on the table, and the subcontractors are the ones paying the price. Now he's bettering his position after bid day to make up the money he left on the table through all the major subcontractors, mechanical, the electrical, and who knows? To me, as a taxpayer, that's a red flag to what kind of projects you're going to get. If you got people cutting, I mean, just on the electrical side, I was asked to take almost 9% out of my bid. And the reason was, because, guys, we've left $3 million on the table. We got to, we got to find it. That's not right.
Dave?
Just a question, there is a formal protest procedure on bids, is that true? That you can, you know, go through to file a protest on, on a bid that's submitted to the city? I don't have the details, but the staff can assist you with that process, as well as any other bid, any other contractor who submitted a bid. So there's a process that you can go through to submit a formal protest.
Kim, do you have a, do you have a thought?
Yes, you can submit a protest. I believe you submit it to the purchasing agent, or whichever purchasing agent you're submitting the bid to.
Okay, Kenny, this is a construction contract, and usually they file the letter with the city clerk.
Okay.
And then we forward it to the attorney over that trust.
Right.
And this is a, this is a MAPS III project.
And the deadline?
Well, the deadline's before the bid's awarded, and today we're awarding the contract.
Well, I wish I would have been told that when I called up here almost a month ago, because they said that I had to attend this meeting, fill out a form prior to, and that was all I could do up to that point, is wait for this, this meeting today, or I would have filed this protest.
So if we pass this today, that would preclude his filing a protest?
Would he go to district court?
Well, yes, he could attempt to go to district court. Well, yes, he could attempt to go to district court.
Pete?
How complicated is, how complicated is the form, the application?
The protest?
Yeah.
It's just a simple letter, and then the attorney will call him and review the bids and talk to staff and engineer.
Would the, would his filing the protest, obviously it would preserve his right, but then if we then later approved the bid, is that wiping out? Or does he still continue to have a right to challenge?
He can always go to district court.
Does he have to file the protest before he goes to district court?
I don't believe so.
My concern is, if he did get bad information, he may have, he may not have asked the right question. Sometimes that happens when you get bad information, is because you didn't ask the right question, but that's not your fault. I wouldn't, if he has a, I do think if what he alleges is true, that is a whiskey slippery slope for us to be on, to have a bidder get, be awarded the bid and then go back and chisel with the other people to try to get back to, after he sees what's on the table. What I'm concerned about was if we were going to do something almost immediately that would prevent him from, from taking that protest forward. If it, if he still has the right to do it, then that's one thing. If he doesn't have the right to do it, we're going to cut that off here with a vote. I'm not going to, I'm going to object to that personally.
Right. Pete, and I've got a second question. If he were to file the protest prior to this vote, would we still be able to vote on it knowing that a protest has been filed?
We have, today?
Yes.
Yes, you could still vote on it.
Well-
I think he can always go to district court. I believe Craig Keith is here, and he's going to know for sure, but there's a, I believe he has a right to go to district court under the Open Competitive Bidding Act.
Vice Mayor and Council, the city has two processes. One is a procurement process, and one is a competitive bidding process. Under the procurement process, we have a protest procedure for dealing with unsuccessful bidders. Under the competitive bidding process, there is a process wherein you can go to district court to protest an award. Now, without giving the gentleman legal advice, there's also a difference between a protest by a bidder and protest and the award and the status of a subcontractor to a potential bidder. So what we're talking about here is a potential subcontractor to an unsuccessful bidder or to the successful bidder. It's a whole different scenario.
It's hard to look ahead, but based upon the bidder, who was a pre-qualified bidder, who submitted the lowest bid by several million dollars, that when asked if he was still good with the bid, you know, did he make mistakes? He good with the bid? He said, "No, I'm, I'm good with the bid. I want to perform the work." It's hard to know what type of information that he would submit to us to say that that dollar amount bid was invalid. There's things behind the bid, the issue between them, but I-
That's correct. The city contracts with the general contractor with the bidder and does not have a relationship with the subcontractors and that responsibility.
I understand that. My question is simply, does us approving this bid today prevent him from suing the general contractor for what he alleges to be a bad practice in the bidding process? I know what, we don't have any choice but to take, we have to approve the bid today, I think. We could continue it, but I still don't think we'd ever get to the point where there'd be evidence here that would cause us not to approve the bid, because, as you say, my concern is, because he feels like he was given bad advice by our staff about what he could do, whether that's, whether he asked the right question or not is not relevant. He's here now. I don't want to do something today that would cut his right to sue off if in fact he has grounds for a lawsuit.
I believe the information he was given by staff is correct. This is the hearing. This is the award of the contract hearing, and that is a process for public construction. And I don't think that awarding the contract today would change his position vis-à-vis any claim he may have against the successful bidder.
I assume it could be argued that until the contract's awarded, he hasn't been damaged.
I understand, I understand. Well, I just, if you're, our legal advice is that what we do here today does not restrict his right to fight, to pursue whatever action he would have to take anyway, then that's one thing. If it's not, then I want to talk about it some more. So that's, you guys tell us.
There's a provision in the Competitive Bidding Act where it allows the filing of a lawsuit to challenge the award of a bid.
Correct, and then there's a time limitation on that that's very specific and very short.
So he really should get his own attorney to give him advice on this?
It's going to be difficult to do that in the next five minutes. I, my concern is that we'd not do something that damages him. He's here. If, I mean, I think I can get a better answer than that from you guys. Is his right to sue over this matter that is not something that we deal with? I agree with, I understand that. We don't deal with that. We have to take the bid as it's presented. But does our, does our vote today prevent him from exercising what he considers to be a cause of action against the general bid, the firm, the low bidder?
Cindy advised me that the statute says you have 10 days from the award of the bid to file a lawsuit. So he could file a lawsuit within 10 days of you awarding the bid?
Today, from 10 days to today.
Correct.
I think that's the best you're going to do. The, I think what we're hearing is, and I think that's true, is the city does not, has, does not have the capacity to look behind the bid. If the bidder's a pre-qualified bidder, then we, and he's a low bidder, we're obligated to accept that bid. Now, if he's doing something that is a matter, a civil matter between the two, between you and him, that's a lawsuit that you have, and then you need, you need to seek advice and do whatever you decide to do. But awarding this bid today actually starts in motion. You're right, as the manager said earlier, you're really not damaged until the bid's awarded. You probably wouldn't have the right to sue prior to today. So this has to happen in order for you to give the right.
But he, he has 10 days to find an attorney, get it written up, and file a lawsuit?
Right. So I do not need this, to file this protest that you all have mentioned?
No, your appearance today is proof of your protest.
Okay, thank you.
So you have 10 days to file in district court?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Presentation. We do have Russell Kurt here from MacArthur to discuss the MAPS 2 trail improvements along I-44.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm going to be presenting the west I-44 trail alignment. The intent of this trail is to connect the Lake Hefner with the Oklahoma River. The total budget for the project is $13.8 million, which includes $9.7 million of construction costs. The alignment is based upon the scope described by the Trail's master plan, and the recommendation is one which considers safety, geometrics, public comments, as well as an alignment which maximizes accessibility and connectivity. This here is a typical section for the trail, 12 feet wide asphalt. This is a section that will be used whenever we have space. However, different widths and materials may be used depending on the location. Recommendation of the, sorry, the, an overview of the recommended alignment. There's a total length of 8.15 miles. The initial cost estimates indicate we will be within the budget. The alignment chosen does not include any share the road, includes a number of grade separation crossings, as well as utilizing existing parking facilities and connecting to a number of points of interest that were highlighted by the Trail's master plan, which you can see there. They include parks, schools, hospitals, businesses, things of that nature. You're looking at a rather small scale, but this is the overall alignment for the, for the trail, connecting to the, connecting from Meridian Avenue at the existing Lake Hefner Trail to the Oklahoma River at May Avenue, staying on the west side of I-44 before crossing over to the east side at Northwest 16th Street and passing close to the fairgrounds before connecting to the, to the river. In the interest of time, I'll run through this rather quickly. We have nearly nine miles of trail. I'm going to start at the north end and take you down to the south end, just giving an overview of what the recommendation is. As I mentioned, we're connecting to the, to the Lake Hefner Trail at Meridian Avenue, utilizing the existing parking facility that's at that location, just on the north side of Northwest Expressway. We'll be crossing over the expressway at Meridian, utilizing the existing signalized crossing. We consider multiple locations for crossing expressway, and I would point out here that this recommendation does include the opportunity, or it's been noted that if additional funding becomes available, we would consider a bridge over Northwest Expressway. However, that does not, it's not included in this recommendation. It's just noted that that is something that the subcommittee would, would like to consider if the funding was available.
So how would riders cross Northwest Expressway, just with the existing?
The existing alignment is based on an at-grade crossing. We'll be utilizing the existing signals, upgrading them to have pedestrian infrastructure. That'll be widened for the trail section. So we'll be, we have a traffic engineer consultant who during design will consider all the aspects of safety and geometrics that may or may not include re-timing the lights, but would certainly include all the infrastructure necessary to safely cross.
Okay. That's a very intimidating-
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's one of the main challenges of the project. However, we've considered multiple different locations, and obviously we have to cross it somewhere. When you compare the Meridian Avenue crossing to others such as Portland, this is a crossing which has less traffic lanes, as well as less traffic, less, less turning lanes is one big, big item because of the Lake Hefner Trail on the north side. It's an area with very few turn lanes.
Do you have a sense of what a crossover, a bridge, a Northwest Expressway might cost?
We don't have an exact cost. We did look into that briefly. If you want to comment on, on that, David?
We, we did some thumbnail estimates, and we think it's between $4 and $5 million because the, the bridge, after you elevate it in order to meet ADA, becomes about 800 feet long with the ramps that would go down there, and, and the length is about 175 feet. So the beams that would be required to span all the way across there if we weren't able to put a pier in the middle would be very substantial.
Absolutely. So with that in mind, we've, we've made a recommendation based on at-grade crossing. So once we crossed over the expressway, we'll follow the, follow the east side of Meridian Avenue to Northwest 63rd before crossing to the south side of Northwest 63rd, following that to Northwest Expressway, which we'll follow to Portland Avenue. So we're not crossing the expressway again. We're staying on the south side. This is an image which shows the crossing at Meridian Avenue. You can see the parking on the north side, and you can also see the intended location we'll be crossing the street. This is the existing right-of-way on the south side of Northwest Expressway, looking east. You can see we have in excess of 40 to 50 feet, so the trail in this location will be offset as far, as far from the road as possible, create as much separation as we can. This is also an area with no drive crossings, so we'll have an uninterrupted trail in that area. Once we reach Portland Avenue, we'll follow, we'll continue following the east side of Portland to Northwest 56, so close to the Deaconess Hospital, another point of interest. We'll connect to that there. We'll cross to the south side of Northwest 56, following to Northwest Grand Boulevard, before following that down to Northwest 50th Street. At the Northwest 56th Street, they will, there will be a spur that goes over the bridge that connects to the Integris Baptist Hospital. We've been in close contact with people from Integris, and there is a partnership in place between Oklahoma City and Integris that includes construction dollars for an initial, for additional connection into their, into their facility. The main trail, like I said, will continue to Northwest 56th Street, utilizing the right-of-way on the, on the west side of Grand. We'll cross over 56th Street and follow the west side of the highway sound wall that follows all the way down to Northwest 41st Street. There is a, a utility easement, which you can see in this image here. This is just to the west of the sound wall, to the east of the neighborhood there, and that's where the trail will run all the way to 41st Street. When we reach 41st Street, we'll continue along Grand to St. Clair Avenue, which is the crossing location for Northwest 39th Street. Again, there will be an at-grade crossing. We're utilizing an existing signalized crossing at that location. Once we cross the street, we'll follow, follow the street utilizing the highway right-of-way, which transitions into Grand Boulevard before entering Will Rogers Park, staying on the west side of Grand Boulevard through Will Rogers Park. We will have a parking facility, which you can see in blue in that image. It's approximately halfway between the north and the south connection points, so there'll be a, a trailhead parking area. This image shows the crossing of Northwest 39th Street. You can see there is some existing infrastructure there, which we'll utilize, as well as upgrading it as necessary to create, create a safe crossing location. This image shows the potential area for parking Will Rogers. The location was based on coordination with members of the park department. The intent is to maintain the trees where possible, incorporate them into the design of the parking. Continuing on, on Grand, we'll follow that all the way to Northwest 16th Street, which is the bridge we'll be utilizing to cross to the east side of I-44. Northwest 16th Street, which you can see from the next image. The existing facility is two 12-foot lanes with eight-foot shoulders and five-foot sidewalks. The intent is for bike lanes to be located within the shoulders, and pedestrians will utilize the sidewalk, and we'll transition back to a standard trail section when we got to the other side of the bridge. The typical width for a bike lane is approximately five feet, so there will be separation from the traffic at that location. Continuing on, on Grand, we will pass under Northwest 10th Street. That's one of the great separating, great separated crossings I mentioned. The existing Grand Boulevard obviously goes under Northwest 10th at that point, so we'll be following, following that alignment into the north side of the fairgrounds, following the south side of Northwest 10th Street to May Avenue, skirting the edge of the fairgrounds. At May Avenue, we'll be following the east side, sorry, the west side of May Avenue all the way to Reno. This is an area that's under construction right now, as you're aware. The May Avenue Streetscape Project, so we've been in coordination with the contractor, as well as Oklahoma City and the design consultant. The intent is to expand the existing sidewalk, well, the newly constructed sidewalk, I should say, expand that to accommodate a trail section and utilize the same alignment and the same crossings that are being constructed as we speak. This is the railroad, the UP railroad, which crosses May Avenue. We'll be going underneath that railroad, so there won't be any, any railroad crossings for the trail. This is the location we'll use for that. This is the final slide. We will be crossing to the east side of May Avenue at Reno, again utilizing an intersection that's being upgraded right now as a part of the May Avenue Streetscape Project. And we will follow the east side of May Avenue all the way to the Oklahoma River, going underneath I-40 and connecting to the Oklahoma River Trail, as you see there. Again, this is an area where we'll have parking on the south end, so we'll end up with parking on the north end, in the middle, and on the south end. This area was chosen based on the ownership of the land. Many of the parcels there are already owned by Oklahoma City, so there shouldn't be any need for additional easements or land acquisition in that area. This image shows the trail going underneath I-40, or the existing condition is going underneath I-40. There is a 10-foot sidewalk there currently. The intent is to utilize that existing sidewalk for the trail at that location. And this image is a little hard to see, but just beyond the trees is the Oklahoma River, and the trail will, will tie in there, and that area will be utilized for parking. And that is the end of the presentation. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
So it's not going to enter the fairgrounds? I know at some point there was talk about going, is that, it just stays on the outside?
True, adjacent to it. They had some security issues with actually running the trails through the justice house.
Correct. Yeah, we, we looked at various options, and we had many meetings with, with the trail, with the fairgrounds, as well as public input, and looked at various reasons why that's not the best solution. So what we've done is skirted the edge of it, so we still have- So what we've done is skirted the edge of it, so we still have the connection to the fairgrounds without going through it, compromising the safety or day-to-day operations of the fairground. So we kind of got the best of both worlds from that respect.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr., I want you to be finished. The construction?
Yes.
The next stage is the design, which we will go into shortly. I don't think we have a date for construction at this point, David.
Councilman Russell's correct. What we'll do now is break it into three projects, and we're going to design. That'll take six months, eight months, something like that. And I think construction will take at least a year on each of those pieces, not three years, but a year total. That's what I'm thinking.
So we're looking roughly two years to get it finished?
I think it'd be a little short of that, but yes, sir.
At the time it's finished, I would encourage the city to do as much publicity as they possibly can, make people aware, rail system, not only this particular project, but the rail system around the city. I mean, I think it's a real plus, but I think it's one of those pluses that most our citizens want about.
We'll have an opportunity also to do some publicity on the trail system on the overholster to the River Trail, which will open up in just a few months.
Okay. I think we ought to try to do as much as we can to inform our citizens that the trail system exists, where it goes, what we're going to plan to do ultimately, our overall trail system.
I agree, Pat. And Lake Hefner is an unbelievable resource. There are a lot of neighborhoods who just don't feel they can safely get their bike to Lake Hefner, and a lot are excited about being able to connect under this trail and then get to Lake Hefner.
I think the more publicity we can get, the better off we are, because our citizens don't know about the.
Right.
So I think, I would encourage the city to do whatever they can, whether it's inserts in our bills, TV announcements, non-channel 20, doesn't universal audience, some on the commercial.
The Vice Mayor makes up a great point. Once this trail is completed, there'll be three major access point trails into Lake Hefner. You'll have the one from the lake overholters that's presently connected that goes around Wally Post Park. You'll have this one that goes to the south, and then we've got the one that goes out on the east side down Grand Avenue, which will go through Nicholas Hills and eventually tie down along Deep Fork Creek into the Katy Trail.
I think James is working on Britton Road and access from the west.
Yeah.
And to say the least, I'm impressed. I mean, whenever I thought about connecting Lake Hefner to the river in this direction, I thought that that was, I had no idea how you guys were going to do it, but, so that's all I have to say, I'm impressed.
It's a complex trail.
Quick question, Jim. At, on Northwest Highway, the overholster to Hefner, which is open, at one point was going to consider a bridge over Northwest Highway.
Did consider, yes.
Is that still on the drawing board? Has that been taken off the table?
There is no funding for that at this time.
Thank you, sir.
There was a grant application that I know was applied for some federal trail access dollars at one point in time, but it was never funded.
Any other questions?
We also have a preliminary report here on the wellness centers. In the interest of time, it's before you, we have people from GSP that are available to present it. It's council's choice whether you want to hear on the wellness centers or just receive the preliminary report. It's not substantially changed from the earlier presentations.
Are there any questions on the wellness center? Okay. Are there any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Your Honor, I'd like to ask the question of our fellow guests. When will the first one start?
Councilman, the first wellness center, which is the one up north, is anticipated to start right around the first of the year.
About how long, David, will that take?
It'll take 14 to 16 months.
So we're a couple of years away again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, Larry, sorry.
Six Y when you get to the individual consideration?
Six Y. Any other individual considerations?
Mayor?
Yep. R1. R1. AF. And AG3. Any other, okay, Larry, you want to start?
Yes, one of the projects that are part of the 2007 bond program is South Council Road. And Eric, if you'd come forward and just give the viewers a brief update on what this is going to do as part of that?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Councilman. There's obviously, as a part of our bond program, not just street widens, which we also have street resurfacing projects, and one of those is actually going to occur on South Council Road. It's actually going to be completed in two parts, and so what's on the agenda today is just the first phase of a two-phase project. So we're actually going to be resurfacing from State Highway 152 all the way to Interstate 40. This first phase will actually start at State Highway 152 and take us to a half mile north of Southwest 29th. The second phase will actually begin early in the spring, and that phase is also the phase that includes the improvements at Southwest 15th Street, which includes some new turn lanes that are going to be incorporated as a part of that project. You may have recalled that, because that was a developer agreement that we actually had your consideration for at a previous council meeting, where there's a donation being made to make that happen by waste management. So, but with that, I can answer any additional questions that you may have.
Pete?
On R1, it's a acceptance of dedications at a subdivision. I was in that subdivision recently, and the, it did not look like to me the roads were going to hold up. And I've had some recent bad experience over the last two or three years with rural subdivision roads not holding up, where the city had to go in and actually redo the entire system, three cases, in fact. I just want to be sure that we're not, this thing has some underlying problems also, but I just want to be sure we're not, we've fairly inspected that road system there, and it does meet our standards.
The Public Works Department does do inspections on those that make sure they meet our road standards, and we would have gotten that indication from them before we would have set this for acceptance. If you want to...
I hate to be difficult, but I mean, we had that same bond of three that I'm talking about, and they all three failed. I would like, just to continue this to the next docket.
It'll be fine.
Okay. And let's go around, I didn't know the question. It has been, if you inspect it in the last 30 days, I haven't been there in the last 30 days, but prior to that, I was in that subdivision a couple of times for different reasons, and there were obvious failures that were occurring at that time. And they were occurring because of the concrete trucks that were bringing the concrete to do the slabs. They were, it just seemed to be a bad signal at that early stage of the development to start to see failures in the...
Okay. We'll get with Eric and talk to the inspector.
Two minutes would be great.
Yeah, and I'll go by myself, and maybe I won't have any comments at all, but I intended to do that on this one, but I just didn't get it done. The other one, just a question about the location of the fire station. There have been some questions about whether it was going to be at 149th and Douglas, or whether it's going to be south and west of there, and I just, have we decided 149th and Douglas?
Yes, sir. We recently purchased that property, and that's why we're moving forward.
We decided.
So it'd be 149th Street between Douglas and Midwest Boulevard.
Good. The other one, is the resolution approving the right-of-way and some other matters with ODOT concerning the reconstruction of the I-240 and I-35 exchange? I know there has been substantial concern in the South Oklahoma City community about the plan, the ODOT plan. Does this in any way approve? It's my impression that most of the people that have been involved in the plan are not happy with it, and that, where does this put us with regard to? I mean, this is a project's going to, no, I won't be alive to see it over with, and I doubt if anybody in the room will be, but I want to be sure that we are doing the best thing we can. This really affected a number of businesses very adversely that are to the, well, either side, either side of I-35.
I know several state representatives and state senators have gotten involved in this issue, and there's been meetings with the property owners and ODOT and those legislative leaders in regards to, so I think a number of those issues have been, are in the process of being worked out, and I'm not going to say that they're finally worked out.
This doesn't preclude then further negotiation and further planning with regard to...
Yeah, this would not preclude that.
This does not. And so there's actually three items that you're going to see for different ODOT projects that are on the agenda today, and these are agreements that actually the city is required to enter into with ODOT as a part of state statute. We actually, as that interstate runs through the city, have to participate, and this is that participation agreement, and this is for utilities only. So this isn't for the actual project, this is for utility relocation.
This will facilitate then the further discussion.
It does.
Okay. I just want to be sure.
Councilman White, it might be appropriate to ask for deferral on item R1?
Yes.
Before we do the vote.
Okay. And I just, before we vote, I just want to make a comment on BP, and say a thank you. We received a $20,000 anonymous cash donation to our animal welfare division. The city of Oklahoma City might not be your first thought when you think of charitable giving, but it is an option. The city has, obviously affects many impacts of life of our citizens. You can donate to the city in any division and get things like this to the animal welfare division done, and most importantly, that is 100% tax deductible. So if you're looking for tax deductible donations, you can, you can give that money to the city, and we will use it wisely. So a thank you to that person who donated that $20,000. So...
Is the city a 501 organization? The IRS?
No, I believe it's just a governmental...
Yeah.
Donation to a governmental...
Donate to government.
Yes. So we are, so do we vote on...
I'd like to move, continues for one week of item R1. Two weeks, excuse me.
Wait a second. Okay. All in favor? That passes unanimously. Is there a motion on the rest of the consent docket?
With the items taken.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. So we'll move to the concurrents docket. Any comments on the concurrents docket?
Concurrents docket.
All in favor? Concurrents docket passes unanimously. Move to items requiring several votes, start with eight, A1, 2, and, let's see, 3 is going to be deferred. So John, 1 and 2 are yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? I move for approval for A1.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. A2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? I move, I see the, is the applicant present? Mr. Johnson, can you briefly explain?
Sure. Good morning. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, and here with me today is one of the developers, Caleb McHaleb. This is a rural area that we have prepared a PUD for an RA-type zoning, a minimum lot size 30,000 square feet, very similar to Stone Mill addition on 122nd and Coltrane. The applicant is making every effort to preserve the trees and the natural amenities that are on this site. We're working with the water utility to allow us to extend potable water from Edmund, which an agreement has gone before this council before, and so we're working out the details with the water department on that, and that would provide both potable water and fire suppression for this subdivision. With that, I'd ask for your approval.
Okay. Quick question. I see that a creek runs through this potential development. Who's going to be responsible for maintaining the creek?
The creek that you see on there is actually a USGS Blue Line, so we won't be able to do anything to that creek. We won't be realigning it. It'll be retained in its natural condition. It'll be in a common area. The Homeowners Association will be responsible for maintenance of that. The developer intends to utilize the existing pond on the north and extend some of those water features to the south to add more water amenity to the development.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I move for approval.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. A3 is deferred, moving to A B, oh, sorry, B, 8B. John is also...
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is for a utility easement. I move for approval.
All in favor? 8B passes unanimously. 8C is a public hearing on an assessment role for the Stockyards Bid District. Has anybody signed up to speak? Okay.
Moving ahead. Second.
All in favor? 8C passes unanimously. 8D, I believe is a companion item, an emergency.
That's correct. This is actually the ordinance adopting and ratifying the assessment role for the Stockyards Business District.
All in favor? 8D passes unanimously. 8E is a final hearing.
This has to do with the water rates. This is the third time we've been to council. We had the public hearing two weeks ago, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Larry, do you have any, were you, okay, any questions? Pat? Okay. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
And then item F also comes from the Water Department, and this is somewhat of a companion item, has to do with discontinuation of service and termination fees.
Designing and housing, we have our law.
That's the goal.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Which brings us to 8G, which is the T and B ordinance, and what...
Sidney Richards here this morning to go over this a little bit, but as we left the long public hearing two weeks ago, there was, I think it's safe to say, there was not unanimous direction given by council at that point in time. A lot of good ideas, different ideas, it came from the council, and so the council was asked to submit your own individual amendments to this ordinance, and we put them on the docket for this morning. And so we have eight individual amendments on the proposal, and Sidney's going to go through those individually here in a second, and then we'll discuss each of those, and then the ninth item is actually the ordinance by itself, and then there's another item after that, which is, Sidney's going to explain, which is a separate consideration of an ordinance. But our anticipation will be that we will adopt a number of amendments to this ordinance, adopt the, and then refer back to the Traffic Commission as a package, let them have input to it, and then we get it back to us, not with all the amendments, but just with the selected amendments in a new package. Sidney?
Thank you, Mr. Counsel. Cindy Richard with the Municipal Counselor's Office. As Jim indicated to you, there are a number of amendments, so I'm going to go over them as a list as briefly as I can in summation of what they do, and of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you then. The city manager was correct that we have an ordinance in place that requires the Traffic Commission to review items that impact transportation and traffic in the city. So most of these things are material changes or touch something completely new, so those will have to be reconsidered by the Traffic Commission and then come back to you. And at that point, hopefully, the amendments that you decide on today will all be in one package, so you can see what the ordinance would ultimately look like. So having said that, item G1 was a request from Councilman Greiner. This would remove the inspection requirements in all three proposed articles, taxis and limos, carriages, and T and Vs. So no inspection requirements. It does require that the vehicle be in good repair and clean. Item G2 was a request, a combined request from Councilman Greiner and Councilman McAtee, and this removes the physical requirement for drivers. That would be also in all three articles, taxis, limos, carriages, and T and Vs. Item G3 was a request from Councilman McAtee. It also applies to all three articles, and it specifies the level of the OSBI background check requirements that would be required for all drivers, but specifically, it raises it to the level of checking sex offender registries and violent offender registries. Item G4 is a request by Councilman Greenwell, and as I recall, Councilman Greenwell indicated his intent on this ordinance was that it be considered in the event that some lesser amount of regulation than what is currently in the proposed ordinance before you occurs for T and Vs, and that would be requiring T and V companies to put a statement... for T and Vs, and that would be requiring T and V companies to put a statement on their, any ads that they have here or on their app, on their network-based app, that says, "Our services are not regulated or monitored by the city of Oklahoma City as taxi services Item G5 is a request from Councilman Ryan, and it removes the, the role of the Traffic Commission, which is currently that it approves taxi rates to be fair and reasonable, but it will require that taxi rates continue to be posted with the city and on vehicles visible Item G6 is a request from Councilman Shadid. It applies to all articles, taxis, limos, carriages, and T and Vs, and it adds a no refusal on rides requirement based on sexual orientation. So the same provision that says you can't refuse service for race, gender, et cetera, sexual orientation would be added to that. Item G8 was a request from Councilman Shadid, and.
Item seven?
Oh, I'm sorry. Item G7 is a request from Councilman Pettis, and this is also impacting the no refusal requirement, and it would add ride origin and ride destination within the corporate limits, so there can be no refusal based upon where the pickup is to occur or the final destination drop-off is to occur. Item G8, Councilman Shadid requested this, and we did alternates on this. So item H will be an alternate version of this, and we'll get to that in a little while, but what G8 does is it creates a hybrid of what you discussed at the meeting, Councilman, of the Tulsa approach, which is a licensing scheme but not a permitting scheme of the driver. So it licenses the TNC companies, but it doesn't require drivers to, to come in to get a permit. It removes the permitting process for the driver. It removes the physical requirement for the TNC driver. It removes the vehicle inspection requirement for the TNC driver insofar as those things are done by the city, which is what's currently in our proposed ordinance. But it does require the licensing company, the TNC company, to do a background check on its drivers, to do an inspection on its drivers' vehicles, so it kind of shifts that Councilman, it doesn't impact the proposed amendment for Articles 1 and 2, so I'm not gonna, I don't want to mislead you. You know, we had a 48-hour deadline to get these things drafted, these amendments. We may have to go back and look at Articles 1 and 2 to look at if there's any unintended impact by amending Article, the proposed Article 3 with this, and yet leaving Article 1 and 2 proposed amendment in place. We might have to come back and deal with some issues on that.
Okay, so let's be clear on that. On Article 1 is, is with the taxi cabs, so we're not addressing that.
Correct.
And Taxi 2 is with.
Carriages.
Carriages and others, so we're not addressing that. It's only Article 3, which is, is with the internet-based companies.
And if you'll remember, these are proposed amendments to the proposed ordinance. So there are amendments in the proposed ordinance to Articles 1 and 2, so we're not touching those. We're leaving those in place, and this hybrid approach only applies to TNCs. So, and then the next item, G9, is the original proposed ordinance that's already come to you for the initial hearing and the public hearing, so that's still before you for consideration. And then item H is the subsequent item, and we had to put it on as a completely new item on the agenda. It's not on for introduction even, it's simply a referral to the Traffic Commission. It completely adopts the Tulsa approach except for minimal changes of, where it said city of Tulsa, we changed it to city of Oklahoma City and that sort of thing. What I had indicated to Councilman Shadid, who requested this item also, is that we've come a long way in the last 10 months that we've been working on this, on issues like insurance requirements and that sort of thing. The insurance that, the requirements that you would find in item H are a thing that the TNCs had a year ago, which is a million dollars of coverage while the ride is occurring. But since then, we know at least that Uber and Lyft have added additional insurance that covers different phases of that TNC service. So from the time that they click the button on their phone app saying, "I'm available to give somebody a ride," until the time they click on the phone app saying, "Yes, I'll go, I'll accept that ride that you just sent to me," they have a level of insurance now that, that they didn't have a year ago. So what our original proposed amendment before you, which I believe was G9, has a requirement in there that the current levels of insurance that we know Lyft and Uber have, we've got it required. This item H does not require that. So there are a few little differences like that.
Just interrupt, just to say, a lot of this was the 48-hour deadline in trying to cover our.
Absolutely.
I, I'm not even really interested in H as, even though I'm the sponsor of it. It'd be more G8, which I think is, we can talk about them individually, but I, I would be more interested in the G8 model than, than H.
Okay, great.
So.
That really is the summary list. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Your Honor.
Yep.
Big suggestion?
Yep.
I think, I mean, we need to go back and rethink the whole approach, have the ordinance vehicles hire by the same requirement across basic owners of TNC or the cab company responsible for insurance. Drivers are qualified, have backgrounds. I think, I want fairness entirely. Had one item, one ordinance, covered all vehicle hire. That way. Discrimination, about unfairness, about tilting the playing field, we'd have everybody on the same position. And I think that would be maybe, that would be an H1 maybe, or an H, a G1 or whatever it happens to be. And we wouldn't have to discuss the individual suggestions because they, they essentially all pointed in that same direction, that they wanted some kind of leveling, some kind of a commonality between the taxi cabs and the TV and T and Vs, whatever they call them. And I think if we had one ordinance that covered all of them, and put the onus of enforcing some of these things on the owners of the company, as we did in one of the T and V suggestions, and make that same requirement of the taxi cabs and owners, the carriages for hire owners, the limos, we'd have a, one ordinance that would do for everybody. And we would eliminate some of this confusion and some of this accusations that we face about tilting the plane.
So, so what you're saying is you would like to eliminate Chapter 3 and add TNCs and T and Vs into Chapter 1?
Just one chapter.
Right.
That's what you're. And that's all I would suggest.
I think that probably would have been a good idea. But, yeah, go ahead.
Pat, while I'm not in agreement with your statement, if we did follow that, then we would have to require the traditional taxi services to provide the same level of technology that the share-ride companies have, and specifically in regards to the ability to rate each individual driver within the taxi company as they currently are being rated by the customers with respect to the Uber and Lyft programs. So I, I don't know if they have that ability, but if you're trying to say, "Let's keep it equal," then let's keep it completely equal and put that responsibility back on the taxi service companies.
I, I do think, Pat, that while they have many similarities, just as maybe a DVD and a CD do, I mean, they do different things, just as a horse carriage is different than a taxi. I mean, if we're going to put petticoats and, we have a transport service from the airport, which is not allowed to hail people on the streets, so there are different categories. I'm not aware of any city that has just put them all in one umbrella. I mean, I think, as, as far as I can tell, every other city has an ordinance that, that specifically addresses T and V function in their cities. It doesn't just throw everybody under one.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, I was concerned. I'm on. Anyway, this is, I broke the other mic I talked to. Anyway, the, I think to the extent that we can, we ought to level the playing field. If there are exceptions that we need to make in there, for instance, airport transport, let's put those exceptions in, but let's not have taxi cabs and T and Vs operating under a different rule. I mean, I think it's important that we try to level that playing field. There's some question as to whether we should regulate taxi cabs, and to some extent, the competition between the T and Vs and the various cab company will provide, I think, a great degree of self-regulation. But we ought to put the burden on the owners of the cab companies, just like we put the burden on owners of the T and V companies to ensure a certain item.
Councilman Ryan, when you say level the playing field, I think you really mean regulate, level the regulation playing field, as, as so that the regulations are level, which is, what we did originally, we do have a, a level playing field, but it's, it's become clear that it's not, that it's not the regulation field that the council wants, so we're trying to modify that down and keep it as equal as we can as we go forward, I think is the goal.
What was the reason that we separated them? Because, I mean, like Councilman Shadid said, they are different, but obviously, there's a bigger difference between a taxi cab and a carriage than a, I mean, taxi cabs and, and TNCs are a lot closer. I mean, they are somewhat different, but they're very, very similar, so what, what was the reasoning behind the separation?
The services that they provide are very similar.
Right.
The way they do it is, is somewhat different. One of the primary reasons that we, we separated them is the reason that many other cities have separated them from the taxi, limos, from the carriages and things like that, and that is so that you could identify those, those business models and then adopt ordinances that would allow you to enforce those specific business models in the way they do things. And so that's why we have proposed it in our original manner. We went through there and we leveled the playing field as we thought, as much as staff thought that they could. And so if, I mean, we can level it further with some of the amendments that you all have suggested, but I think that we need to keep the, the different business models separate in the ordinance so that it would allow us some level of ability to enforce the regulations that we've got out there and hold a specific business model accountable for how they conduct that business.
There are also two legal reasons, Councilman. One is that taxis and limos are considered vehicles for hire under state law, and the state has certain requirements that they have to follow, including insurance requirements. The state, to this point, hasn't determined that it would regulate TNCs, and so basically, we had to build that from the ground up, unlike with taxis and limos. The second reason is, it's legal, but it's also practical. How do you, if you're going to regulate, how do you enforce and regulate TNCs in the same way that you do taxis? You can tell a taxi is a taxi just by looking at it. You cannot tell that a vehicle is a T and V just by looking at it. And that is the basic building block from which we had to operate and function. How will we be able to know when they're in violation and when they're not of any regulations that are passed? And that kind of was the impetus behind a lot of what we did.
And really goes to maybe the crux of, I mean, enforcement of a lot of what we're talking about may be difficult, but the situation we're in now is that we have multiple amendments. For an amendment to pass, it would require four votes. For the ordinance to pass, it would require five votes. We have five speakers who have signed up to speak, so I'm open to suggestions how we proceed. We can go through the amendments.
Let me add something, though, to this concern. I, I'm, I'm not convinced that they're different, any more different than 7-Eleven is, is different than a, than a grocery store. They're both in the business of taking you from point A to point B and charging you. That's it. I mean, that, the way they do it, the way they approach it may be different. One of them may not have to mark their car, the other one may have to. We need to level that. If, if we're going to, if you're going to be able to regulate at all, you've got to do what Ms. Richards said. You've got to be able to identify who you're regulating. So one of them can park in a parking meter because they're not a marked vehicle, the other one can't. It seems to me that, that Councilman Ryan's suggestion at the very beginning is the best suggestion, that is, we find a way to regulate them all the same. Because I don't, I, I can't, for the life of me, I can't see a difference that warrants different kind of regulation. I mean, it may be hard, may be difficult, may be something that somebody doesn't want to do, but I don't see, I just don't see a difference. I mean, it's point A to point B and take money off the guy you're hauling.
But Pete, there's a difference in use of technology. With respect to the ride-sharing programs, the, the users of that, the, the people that are paying to be driven around have the ability to rate that particular driver. Should that driver fall below a particular rating, they're off. They can no longer provide those services. So the combination of, of the technology and the market that you're serving is forcing them to do a good job. We don't have that with the current taxi system. That's a significant difference.
Then, then we ought to have, then we ought to, if that's, if you think that's important to the business, then we ought to force the taxis to do the same thing.
I'm just saying, that's a significant distinction between the two types of services.
No, it's a distinction between the, the way they want to deliver the service. The services are the same.
Distinction without a difference.
The way they deliver is different, but, and if one of them's better than the other one, we think that's a good idea, then we ought to enforce that on both of them. If it's not a good idea, like one can park in a park, I'm struck by that, that one can park in a meter and another can't. I mean, that, you talk about why you, how you get to, you never can find a cab when you want it? Well, how, if they can't park in the meter, of course, they're going to be difficult to find.
But Pete, it was about a year ago that we had those issues brought before us because certain taxi cab drivers were parking in those parking metered areas, waiting until.
And now Uber drivers are parking in those, and Lyft drivers are parking in those very same spots.
Well, how do you know that?
Well, you don't know it, but I suspect it's true. I mean, you have, a little intuition would tell you that on Saturday night, that there are going to be people hovering around places where they think they're going to get a ride.
But that's, Pete, that's a significant difference between the two, is that Uber and Lyft can't hail customers. They don't pick up people on the street. If you, if you wave one down, like Cindy was saying, you don't know what the vehicle is, they don't pick people up on the street. They only pick people up who they agree on the app to go to that location, whereas taxis can drive down the street and pick up anyone. They can just stop in the right way and pick someone up. Well, right now, there is no law that says they can.
No, Uber can't, they sure can pick it up.
Uber can do anything.
They just decide not to. I mean, what they decide inside their business model is a whole different matter than, than, than what, we're talking about taking one business model and giving it preference because they choose a certain business model. And then another business that we've regulated for 225 years this month, who we forced all this stuff on them, we forced all these rules on them, we're saying they have to follow this other set of rules. It seems to me, Pat's right. We send it back to Traffic Commission, let them come up with a, that's something that's fair to everybody, and everybody lives with them. We go down the road, and everybody ought to be equally unhappy when we get finished. I mean, I, I just don't see, the argument, these little nuanced differences don't, to me, rise to the level that you ought to make these dramatic differences between how you, how we deal with them.
And, and if there is something that is significantly different, you can always make an exception.
Right.
In the ordinance. You can always make up a new definition. You can say that in this case, there's a, there's a, you know.
Especially rather than building a whole set of rules on the front side, where you're, you're creating a difference. I just, I'm, I'm for sending it back to Traffic Commission with all these suggestions, having them come up with a, with a fair, with a thing and then vote on it.
This, I mean, this may not be the last we, this may not be our first, our last foray into. foray into the Internet model. I mean, the next would be Airbnb, in which people are using this same model to basically run hotels with their homes and apartments. So is that the same as a hotel? Should we, should we start addressing and start regulating to level that playing field? I'm just, it's something to think about. Larry, did you?
Yeah, for a kid from New Jersey, you're going to find this a little bit out of context. But I was quoted in a paper yesterday, a favoring approach that says this, "What's fair for the goose is fair for the gander." And that is my definition of a level playing field. And just as a simple example, as far as who can drive a taxi cab, there are some particular requirements and some tests that he or she has to go through. I would say that that same thing should be done for the person who is going to offer Uber or Lyft service. So that's the fair for the goose, fair for the gander. The same thing would apply to whether we inspect or don't inspect the vehicles and who does that. If we're going to inspect the vehicles, then the same inspection parameter should be used for the Uber driver as far as the cab driver is concerned. Now, given, saying that, then there are differences in the way that the two organizations render the service. That's this thing called the business model. And within my parameters of my perfect system, that would be dealt there, and so you would not have to take the ride the same way for Uber versus the taxi. One could be gotten through the Internet, and the other would gotten through the taxi dispatch service. So there would be some flexibility in the business model, but as far as the regulations concerned, we try to level the playing field, what's fair for the goose is fair for the gander. How we get there, that I'm kind of confused on, and I think possibly sending this back to the Traffic Commission with, if that's the goal of the council, to say, hey, we want these things the same, and then we want flexibility for the business model to be included in there, and then we get it back and see what we've got.
Is it, so is it fair to say that when, Pat and Larry, when you're saying you want to level the regulatory playing field, that we're also, that we want to shift the responsibility to the company? Shift the responsibility for inspections, shift the responsibility for background checks, shift the responsibility for, away from the city?
Is that not the system we have for T and C vehicles in this proposed ordinance?
No, the city would do the inspections, the city would require them to go to a doctor and get a physical exam and bring the...
Cab driver, but not, I understand that we are exempting T and C from that, they're making the T and C responsible for inspection vehicles.
No, that would be, that's the Tulsa model, that's my, that's G eight, what I was proposing. The ordinance as proposed on nine would have, the city would do the inspections.
That's why I would like to see it go back, as Larry suggested, back to the Traffic Commission with the idea that we need to come up with an ordinance, vehicles for hire. If there are exceptions because there's a horse pulling it, or it's just going to the airport, we'll put those in as an exception.
Pat, would you, who would you favor doing the inspections and the background checks? The T and V and the taxi companies, or the city?
The T and Bs and taxi companies.
Is there, is there general agreement that we'd like to shift responsibility for that to, like Pat's saying, to that?
No, I think that the amendments do point to a policy point of what sort of things do we want to roll back. One is vehicle inspections, another one's fares, another one is the physical requirements. I think that, you know, whenever we go through those things and we vote, I think that'll probably give staff and the Traffic Commission direction on what we think should be rolled back.
I will say that Tulsa basically did that. I mean, they didn't, I don't know that they put taxis and T and Bs under the same, but they shifted the responsibility to the T and B, and that's really the reason for G eight. The Tulsa council approved it unanimously. They were, they were all in agreement. So at a minimum, if we're going to do it different, we should be able to articulate why we're going to do it different, but...
Quick question, this relates to staffing. Would any jobs be lost if we determine that we turn inspections over to those companies? Would any city jobs be lost from the city?
No, sir.
So is it, you're interested, like, right now, you have different standards of the T and Bs. My understanding is that one company sends someone out and inspects, does an 18-point inspection of the vehicle, drives with the driver, makes sure that they can drive, and maybe another one doesn't. So there's that...
Right now, it's my understanding that Uber takes their vehicles to a local business for Midas or a Mediki or something along those lines. And they do a, what they call a 19-point inspection on their vehicles before they allow them to be used. Lyft, on the other hand, engages a, what they call a community representative or community consultant, which I believe is someone that they engage in the, in the community, that will actually inspect those vehicles for them and to make sure that they comply with the company's standards. So they do it a little bit different, differently. Again, our, our proposal was trying to standardize that to some degree so that they were doing it the same and as closely as we could to what we were requiring for taxis and limos, while, again, taking into consideration of the specific business models.
Thank you. Do we want to go through the specific amendments and have the sponsors say a word, or, we've got five people, we can hear?
If my suggestion has any merit at all, we shouldn't have to go through...
Just send it back to the...
Send it back to the Traffic Commission with the idea, we want them to look at developing a single ordinance that covers all vehicles for hire, and if they have exceptions because the transport to the airport is pulled by a horse, we can deal with those exceptions.
But you don't think we should have a vote on whether or not we think that the Traffic Commission should still have to review fares and how we should control fares?
Only if we review fares for the T and Bs or the TVNs.
And those are issues, excuse me, those are issues that we really do need to try to get resolved today.
Yes, I think so.
Because that will give us some direction as to, as to what council would like to see in a revised ordinance. Do you want the city to inspect the vehicles? Do you want the companies to inspect the vehicles? Do you want the drivers to take a physical exam? Do you not want the drivers to take a physical exam? Those things that you've brought up as issues, we really need those decided so that we know what we're doing when we go back to the Traffic Commission.
Well, you didn't first time.
No, sir, because our instructions the first time was to develop an ordinance that takes into account their business model and covers public safety and consumer protection concerns. And so that's what we did.
And I really think that the business model is, we should be indifferent to the business model. Because we don't look at business models in any other industry that I know of. And I don't know why we, why we are too concerned with the taxi cab business, that their, their business model doesn't, isn't the same as TVNs. If they choose, they could adopt the same business model TVN does.
Well, Pat, it's not so much the business model as it is their operating structure. Their operating structures are different.
That should be driven by their business model, their operating structure. If it's not, they've wasted their money.
The way police officers that are out there trying to enforce this ordinance based upon different operating practices.
Okay, if we, if we do what I suggest, then we could put these police officers to enforcing the law that's left over after we get this ordinance written.
Well, I do have some legal questions, if that ends up being the result of this being sent back to the Traffic Commission for total reconsideration. I see that there are kind of two overarching main issues. Are we looking at less regulation overall or more regulation overall? Are we looking at making them look more like taxis? And we can't forget that limos are also in Article One, and that's a completely different business model also in the current set of ordinances that are in the code book. It recognizes that taxis and limos operate differently. Or are we going to make everything look more like T and Bs? So, for instance, if you want to talk about the kind of specifics we've been discussing over 10 months, is if we change the approach, are we going to make T and Bs go, all get their cars painted in a certain manner like taxi companies do? Or are we going to say taxis no longer have to be painted a certain color? So those are the kinds of policy questions that if we just go back to Traffic Commission, we're starting back from square one, and it could be another year of, you know, getting through all of those kinds of things. So I guess from a legal perspective, I certainly would ask for some guidance today from council.
My thought is, we, we are, I think, pretty well unanimous with regard that regulations ought to be decreased. I don't think, I haven't heard anybody says they ought to be increased. There are some of the things we're asking for that are increases, but not generally. Generally, I think the movement is they ought to be less regulated than they are. And I, I think that answers the first. The second question is, as to the differences, I'm not sure those differences aren't just arbitrary. I mean, the idea that one can't be identified, if we're going to, say, you can't park in a certain place, then we've got to make the Uber, Lyft folks identify their vehicles so that, so that can be enforced on them. I mean, that's just, that's not hard. They can stick a plastic sticker on the side and go on. I'm not advocating that. Maybe we ought to just let people park wherever they want to. If there's a rule that says a cab, Uber can't be hailed, or that's their business model, then they would choose that. That's not, that's not our problem, that they've decided their business model doesn't let them be hailed.
Well, as we worked for it, what we tried to do is, when we looked at the business model, was to say, okay, if taxis can't park in the current code in individual metered parking spaces, then T and Bs should not be allowed to park in all the taxi stands around town. So it's kind of a trade-off based on the logic behind their business models. On the fares, the reason why we have in the proposed ordinance differences is because on the T and Bs, you have to order the car on your smartphone, and they show you the fare before you accept the ride. With taxis, unless there's a requirement for the posting of the fares, you could get in and never know what your charge was going to be. So we tried, as we went along all these months, to look at the opposing, or the different business models and still make the vehicles safe for the public and that the public would be knowledgeable about what the ride was about. So that was the goal initially that we worked through.
Well, I mean, I'm still, the differences are, don't justify the degree to which this ordinance, this set of ordinances regulates both of them, in my opinion. That, I would resolve the parking thing in a different way. I would say, you can park wherever you want to and just eliminate that. If you're, if you're going to park in a metered spot, you got to put a dime in a meter. And it doesn't matter who you are. So that way, you eliminate that part of the enforcement part. An officer doesn't have to say, I wonder if that guy's an Uber driver waiting for a ride, because I, I just, to me, that's easy. Just let them park wherever they want to park and charge, and they have to pay the meter. Maybe put very short-term meters, but I just think that we can look at it from a different standpoint, and I agree with Pat. I think all these things are just, could be worked out.
So Pete, you're, you're in agreement with Pat, that just like Cindy's saying, that taxis and limos are different, but they're still under Article One together, that we could just put T and Bs, taxis, limos, all of them?
James made a great point, I thought. If there are exceptions, tell us why, that you're treating them differently. And I don't believe business model is a good reason. And I, I agree with Pat on that. I don't think business model has anything to do with it.
Because I don't know this for a fact, but I assume that limos don't have to be painted a certain color. Is that correct? And they're, they're in the same chapter? Or they're in the same...
Whatever differences are, let us know what they are. And I think the less regulation possible for everybody is probably the direction this council wants to go. That's from, I'm listening. There are tiny little incremental things like sexual orientation being added, like check for sex offenders. There are a number of little differences that would increase regulation. And I think those are well taken. We ought to, those ought to be thought. But generally, everybody is saying, let's loosen the regulations anyplace we can. I mean, I think, I agree that this business model brought that about, and that's, that there's good things that have happened as a result of this business model, but...
Can I just ask the council, is there anyone who feels that taxi driver, limo driver, T and V driver needs to go to a doctor, get a physical exam, saying they can drive, and then present that to someone? Are we in consensus on that?
Well, that's why we should vote on item two, right? Is that not the case? I mean, am I in the minority here?
No.
I mean, I kind of love all these things. I don't know why.
The individual eight amendments that are before us, if voted upon, will give staff some real direction. And then if you want to give this direction beyond that, that's good, but it would at least take eight items off the table for us to focus on.
Okay.
And then further direction is great also.
We have five speakers, maybe what we...
Well, there needs to be three things you could vote. You could vote for it, you could vote against it, and you could say, I don't care as long as both of them are treated the same. And that's the way I feel. I think it's a waste of time to vote on them individually when the overriding concern is to treat them all the same, not individual decisions. If there are all these things, if they don't need physicals, then they don't need physicals. I mean, I think they've heard that, and I think that's, they don't need to be painted, they don't need to be marked, they do need to be painted, they do need to be marked, they can't park here, they can't park there. They've heard...
We've heard that.
Right.
Clearly, we've heard that. But the question is, at what level of public protection do you want? That's why we're having...
Less, less.
Okay, but how far less?
Well, that's, that's for somebody, experts to decide and bring it to us.
So as a body, as a body, are we okay with voting on the individual amendments?
We can do that. I mean, I'm not objecting to doing it, but it's going to take an hour, and it isn't going to make any difference one way or the other when it gets down to the Traffic Commission. They're going to have to revise a brand-new ordinance when they start to blend the two things together. There's going to be, that's where these exceptions may come in.
Councilman, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to know that if we're making a policy decision that we're not going to regulate drivers, we're not going to regulate vehicles on any of that, we're given all that, we're not going to have any level of public protection, tell us that, we'd be happy to drop an ordinance along those lines.
I mean, I don't think it'll take an hour either. I think it'll take 15 minutes.
While we ponder that, maybe we can hear from the citizens who've signed up and have been waiting to...
And can we also hear from staff for their recommendations? Because they are the ones who have to deal with this type of stuff all the time, so...
Perhaps with each amendment, we can hear from staff and what the implications of each amendment would be. Is Michael Hinton, Michael, I don't see Michael, Joey Allen, can you just state your address for the, name and address for the record?
Certainly. My name is Joey Allen. I'm the general manager for Kings Worldwide Transportation. I live at 6612 North Omaha in Oklahoma City, 73116. Our business is at 4801 Northwest 10th Street in Oklahoma City. I had a lot of things prepared to say, and most of you, with the exception of Mr. Shadid, have echoed the things that we thought. We've been in business in Oklahoma City since the mid-'30s. I live in Mr. Ryan's district. Our business is in Councilman McAtee's district. I'm vice president of 501(c)(3) Neighborhood Coalition, the Friends of Northwest 10th Street, which is in Wards One and Three. My mom has lived in Ward Five for 25 years. We are Oklahoma City. We've been here for a long time. We abide by the regulations that you all have put forth. That's how we built our business model, was around the regulations that we were required to have. You know, as I looked at the things, as I looked at the things that you all were looking to reduce regulation about, it seemed like physicals was a really big deal, like that was going to take half a day and $3,000 to go get a physical. You can get what's called a taxi cab physical for less than $40 at Broadway Clinic, at CRG Labs, at a number of places around town, that tell you if hearing, eyesight, reflexes, blood pressure, medications, any things along those lines that might prohibit someone from being a good driver, a good vehicle for hire driver. You had someone stand here two weeks ago and tell you that they took drugs all the time and sometimes, I mean, they were legal drugs, mind you, but they were things that impaired their driving, and they chose when it was wise for them to drive and when it was wise for them not to. I'm not certain that's something that should be in the hands of those people. I think that should be regulated in some way. The way you find that out is through those physicals and through those annual drug tests. We run a tight business, but there are things that come up when we have people apply for work and when I have existing chauffeurs that, oh, you know, I probably don't have to tell them that I've started taking this, that, that makes a difference in the way that we do business. And so those people are no longer, those people no longer would drive for us. Vehicle inspections. Sergeant Dancy does an incredible job of vehicle inspections every year. Again, we have all of our vehicles professionally maintained. We put tens of thousands of miles on those vehicles every year. We do all of the things that we're supposed to do. But that annual checkup is great because it makes us go back and double-check, are the tires good, do the lights work, do the signals work, is everything, is the interior clean, does the outside look decent, does it have scrapes, is it painted correctly? All of those kinds of things. You have in front of you Chapter 56, as it was revised by the city council or by the Traffic Commission, by the city attorney's office, and it does a whole lot of what you're talking about doing when you talk about leveling the playing field. Uber and Lyft came and spoke against it two weeks ago... Uber and Lyft came and spoke against it two weeks ago, because it levels the playing field. We were here asking for a few things to be tightened up, not to do away with Ordinance 56. I know Pam from Yellow Cab is going to speak in a moment. She can talk about the fares. That affects her much more deeply than it does us. The Tulsa ordinance, in my opinion, is just a big joke. It puts all of the regulation back on the company. For the reasons that I just talked about, for physicals, for people checking in every year. Who's going to do that? Miss San Francisco or Mr. Chicago? Are they going to fly in and check those people out on a regular basis? We see these people coming in and out of our business, our employees, the 30 employees that we have, not subcontractors, employees, that we have coming in and out of our business on a regular basis. Pardon me. We see coming. So I would just really ask you to take a close look, even before you send it back to the Traffic Commission, look at the ordinance, look at the chapter as it was revised and sent over to you. It levels a lot of those playing fields. It requires a lot of the same things for the TNVs that it requires of taxi cabs, that it requires of limousine companies. So we're certainly not interested in another year's worth of changes. Ms. Richards has the patience of Job. She has dealt with us, and our attorneys, and the Traffic Commission, and really has put before you something that we're supportive of. Are there a few things that we would like to have? Yeah. You know, Councilman White, to your point, I think we're at that point right now where not everybody's happy. There are things that we would like to see tightened up and changed. We think that it's important to see those changes. But I would at least implore you to take a look at the actual Chapter 56 that came over to you from the Traffic Commission, before you send it back to them for changes again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Pruitt?
Good morning. My name is Greg Pruitt. I am the owner and president of King's Worldwide Transportation here in Oklahoma City. We have been in business since 1978. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this morning. I'll be brief. Apologize for my own voice, for my voice. Following up what Mr. Allen just said to you, I can't say that Article 56, as proposed by our legal team and Police Department, makes us thrilled. However, the process that we've just gone through in the last year, having come to the Traffic Commission and asked them to make this a level playing field, I think we've all played by the rules. We've all had a chance to hire our attorneys and our lobbyists, and come in and tell them what we're concerned about and what we're not. And they have answered every question in my, in my thinking that you have raised. So I was not terribly concerned until the end of the meeting two weeks ago. Now I'm terribly concerned. We've seen the politics of these TNCs around. Having our mayor recuse himself, and other members of this chamber wanting to throw out everything that's been put before you is extremely concerning. We operate our business to the highest point. We require $5 million on every vehicle that goes out. You require a million. We understand what it means to drive our citizens and our public officials, and our visitors in the city, and why it's important that we are covered and we are safe. We inspect our chauffeurs, we train them, we certify them, we do all of that ourselves, and then we go through your process, that we have been asked to abide by for the 30 years we've been here. I was in San Francisco last Sunday morning and Tuesday. Brought more cause for concern. They're telling you they're not going to hail cabs, they're not going to hail fares. In San Francisco, they park, Uber parks in regular parking meters, and stand outside with a little U. If that's not hailing cabs, I don't know what it is. The other wish, the other issue that we saw is people with their app hailing cars, and knowing that a car is right there, and they're so saturated in that market, that they're stopping in the middle of the street. And we saw people getting out of their cars and screaming at the passengers and Uber drivers. So there are great concerns before you today. I echo the fact that even though we're not thrilled with the fact that Article 56 has proposed to you, goes far enough, yes, I'm asking you for more legislation, more restrictions, for the safety of our citizens, for the safety of the people that travel in these. I really wish that you would give that strong consideration. I don't know why we would send it back for another year of cost to all of us to go through this. I feel like they've done the absolute best they can. I feel like they've done exactly what you've asked them to do, and I would support what the police and your city attorneys have put before you. I would also request that you ask very specific these questions about inspections and medical things, that you would speak to the Police Department that does these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point. If the Traffic Commission would hear this this month?
It could. It depends on what happens today. It is possible to get it on the traffic agenda, Traffic Commission agenda for September.
Okay. Wes, people?
West Pravel, 345 Northwest 39th. I'm, I think I'm the only driver of anybody out here that's here today. Couple of things on the, on the physicals. The physical requirement is only once every five years. Don't really think that's a huge deal. It's not even a year-to-year thing. It's once every five years. Kind of struggle a little bit with the business models, because if you don't separate the business models, I think you're going to open up a lot of issues. For example, last night, I was parked at the bus station, and in comes an Airport Express van at 1:30 in the morning, that is not allowed to pick up people unless they're going to or from the airport. Came there, picked somebody up. Totally illegal. So, you know, Uber, all you have to do with Uber and Lyft is go to the concert. That was Friday night, or Saturday night, I believe, out at the New Air Park. There were 10, 12 Uber and Lyft drivers sitting there, not waiting for anybody, soliciting for fares. So, you know, you have, you have to, I think, you do have to separate the business models a little bit. And then, like I said last, or two weeks ago, I think the biggest issue is Dancy, and they're overworked with all the requirements. They don't have time to come down, and, I mean, I hate to say it, but to babysit us in some situations, and force the parking meters. You know, I think, at first, I wasn't for the parking meter restrictions for cabs. However, when I'm looking at it, I don't think it's that big of an issue anymore. And if you go back to the other way, you're going to have situations where the parking meter guy comes down the block, and that's when everybody's going to run and go park it, pay the parking tolls. I mean, that's, that's not really, you know, fair to him. And it's just cab drivers, I think, taking advantage of the situation. So I don't think that needs to be, that's really a big, huge issue. I just think that the two issues that I see are the business models. If you're going to say, you know, Uber cannot, you know, has to go through the app, then you've got to find some way to enforce that, to where if they're down on Friday night, just flagging somebody down, I mean, that's a fare that I could get, that's money coming out of my pocket, when he legally can't pick up that way. And, you know, Airport Express, they have to go to and from the airport. There's got to be a way to enforce that if you're going to go with a business model, so that's pretty much all I got. Oh, I did one wonderful, one more thing I found interesting. Country of Germany, I believe it was last Thursday, basically ran Uber out of the whole country, because of various insurance requirements and stuff. So Germany has banned Uber, has entire country, and you're seeing more and more issues of that. And I think that's something that we also have to look at, is, if you've got a whole country banning a company, that's something that, that's a concern to me.
Wait, can I ask you a question? It seems like in a lot of cities, you have crossover, where you have taxi drivers that are working for Uber and Lyft also. Do you see that here?
There's a few people that do that, and I don't think that should be allowed, myself. I do know a couple of drivers that do that. You know, I love Uber's business model, you know? Their cars are, overall, probably better than most of the cabs. I mean, most of your cabs are, you know, Crown Vics, 8 to 10 years old, you know? Not, they look okay, they run fine, high mileage, but, I mean, they're safe. I'm not saying they're not safe. But, you know, some people want to ride in the Escalade, or in the Town Car, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. I think, you know, and I think that that will ultimately improve the level of cab service in the city. But, you know, you have to find some way to enforce the laws that you have.
Okay. Thanks, Wes.
Just a point of clarification. Germany has just suspended Uber while they're evaluating their services. They haven't...
Banned it?
Banned it. And I just anticipate our state legislature's going to get into this evaluation, so we can spend as much time as we want to, but it's not going to make a whole lot of difference in a while.
They're going to tell us, okay. Pam Thompson?
Hi. My name is Pam Thompson, and I am the Managing Partner of Yellow Cab of Oklahoma, and we are 107 Northwest 14, Oklahoma City. And first of all, this idea about regulation, this proposed ordinances, I too agree, are wonderful, as far as they go. But this is a historically regulated, unregulated, regulated, unregulated industry. And every time it goes totally, I don't know if you realize it, we're a minimally regulated industry here in Oklahoma City. We're very easy entrance to the taxi market compared to most other municipalities. So, and what we have is very consumer protection-oriented. These exceptions that have been created for the TNVs, it's just not fair. I think some of these protections for the citizens are good and should be maintained, but if they're not going to be required to do them, I don't want to be required to do them. And on that meter section of the law, there was a line in there about that we can't change our rates over our, over the internet and our vehicles. That keeps us from being able to surge price like they do. So I, you know, I personally think there should be some regulation. I do think that's in the best interest of the city. But I just want to, I just go back, I just want a fair playing field. And the color schemes, insurance, there hasn't been any discussion on the insurance, really. And I find that ironic, when the insurance regulators, state regulators across the nation, are meeting on this very issue. There's no consensus, as far as I'm, as from what I'm reading, that there is really good insurance behind some of these companies. And they're being allowed to use their personal insurance when they're not logged on to their system. I'd like that same potential. You know, I don't know if y'all realize it, but on top of a taxi cab, there's a light. And on top of that light is another light, a little yellow, we call a yellow dot in our family. And we make it a game, do you spy a yellow dot? That yellow dot means that guy's logged into the system, waiting for service. So if he's, if he's not logged into the system, his light's not on. So it's easy for the public, or for anybody looking at him, to tell if he is operating as a taxi cab or not operating as a taxi cab. So we should be able to have those same, or we could do something, create some way for you to determine. And the color scheme, if they don't have to have color scheme, I don't, I just, I just want fair. Thank you very much.
Now, a quick question. You brought up surging. And I remember, you brought up the word "surging", and I remember when I met with you, you talked about you would love to surge on the 1st and the 15th.
What?
See, I do have an issue there because of people who live in distressed areas. Now, if you all are allowed to surge on the 1st and the 15th, that would do a disservice to some of the people who I represent, who get paid on the 1st and the 15th. And nine out of 10, they either go into the pharmacy or the grocery store. But if their paycheck is $700 on that 1st, and then you all may be allowed to charge $200 to take them to the grocery store or the pharmacy, I think that's ridiculous. And that's one of the reasons why I'm against the simple fact that we should allow surging. I'm against it, because at the end of the day, I got to think about the, some of the poor people that I represent.
Sir, I agree with you, but how am I going to compete? We're talking about business models. All of my drivers are independent contractors that own their vehicles. My business model is so similar to theirs, it's crazy. And how am I going to put drivers in a car if the competitor gets to charge more, and if you drive for me, you don't? That's all...
And that's, and that's one of the issues that I have with this whole surging. I know too many people who use, for example, taxi cabs to get to point A to point C, and so forth. And so I just have an issue with the whole surging deal, because that's true. To me, if I own a taxi company, and I know my competitor is going to surge on the middle income and up as a taxi company, yeah, I'll go after the poor. To me, that's not, that's not fair. And I do believe that we should have a equal playing field. But at the same time, in this whole process, I think we do need to look after those people who live in disadvantaged areas. Because I know at the end of the day, if you all, if taxis are allowed to surge, y'all going to sit there and surge in distressed areas. And to me, that's not fair.
I think, I think surge pricing is probably, it's a horrible term, but, because to me, it's just a, it's just a supply and demand.
True, true. But there needs to be some type of regulations to the surging. Because the taxis, I see the taxi people on the 1st and the 15th taking advantage of people who use their services.
I certainly don't see it as taking advantage. I see it as...
Well, if you have, if your only means of transportation to get to the pharmacy, to get to the grocery store, or whatever, and you only have a certain amount of money to work with, let's say, for example, $500 or $600, you own a fixed income, and the taxi cabs are allowed to sit there and charge a ridiculous amount, to me, that's not fair. Right now, we do have some regulations on how much they can charge.
Pam, does your, does your company, would, if more than one person wanted to go to the grocery store on the 1st and the 15th on the same day, could they arrange through your company where the taxi would pick up three different people, and they could share the cost to decrease the cost?
Okay, by ordinance, we cannot require more than one person to ride at the same time.
No, no, not required.
That we do provide, you know, if they wanted to, we could pick up some, more than one individual, yes.
Because that's, I mean, that's the direction that Lyft is going, is they're trying to do, pick up multiple people and spread the cost to decrease. So that's something that you could do as well.
Right, right. The ordinances have to be, yes, I mean, we could do that. And if people wanted to ride together, we can do that. Most people, there's, we have tried to do this in the past, in the past. It's been the public that doesn't want to do this.
Doesn't want to do...
Doesn't want to share a ride.
Okay.
Pam, I have a question. Have you checked with any of your potential insurance providers to see if they would be able to provide a policy at a less cost, if you could differentiate...
We have them looking at that right now.
And I don't...
And I don't have an answer, because it hasn't been an option across the country.
Right. All I'm trying to say is, I don't think anyone here would have a concern if you had a different level of coverage at different times, meaning when you're carrying a passenger for hire, that you have a higher amount of coverage. And then when that driver does not have a passenger, it would have a lower rate. I don't see why we would try to make a distinction between your vehicle and just another business vehicle. Now, the gentleman who said they carry a much higher level of insurance, from an account standpoint, I think that's smart. You know, attorneys tell us, you're going to get sued to the extent you've got insurance, so consider that. But we always recommend as much insurance as you can get. That's a business decision that you all can make individually. But certainly, I'm not, I've not taken a poll, but I don't see why we would be adverse to allowing you to have various levels of insurance, depending upon what the vehicle is being used for, is my only comment.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
So would the council be okay with moving forward with the individual amendments? Okay, James, you want to do yours first?
It's just, I don't see the vehicle inspections as a public safety issue. I mean, we've talked about it a lot. I see it as a customer service, customer satisfaction issue. I think each, each cab company will, or each Uber, or Lyft, or whatever company will get a reputation of having horrible cars, if they have horrible cars. I think it's in their interest to have nice, well-maintained cars. So I don't think it's a necessary regulation anymore. So that's why I think it's a good idea.
So this amendment, it wouldn't have the TNV, it wouldn't have anybody responsible, not the city? not the city?
Exactly. It's across the board, across the board.
That might make us a bit of an outlier. I mean, I'm not aware of any other city that doesn't have any kind of inspection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not naive to the fact that it's a little bit out there.
Okay. Any other comments on this amendment? Okay.
I'd like to make one comment on the physicals. They're good the day you take them.
Well, that's the next...
The day after you take them, you may be on a different kind of medication, you may have a heart attack, a lot of things can happen. The idea that we have a physical examination is all sense of curiosity.
I don't know if I said it right. Vehicle inspection is what this one is.
Yeah, so that's item two. So we're going to vote just first here on item one, which is only dealing with inspections. This is saying no inspections either from the city or from the TNVs.
So the motion is to eliminate any vehicle inspection requirement?
By anyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there...
It still does require the companies to ensure that their, that their cars are in good repair, are in, are well-maintained. It does leave that language in there. It doesn't, it doesn't require the city to give a permit. That's what it cuts out.
Okay, but it does require the taxi cabs and the TNVs to do inspections?
No.
So who's, it doesn't require inspections? Okay.
We didn't, on this particular amendment, we didn't touch the permitting process. This just simply says the city won't do an inspection, and the companies need to make sure that their vehicles are maintained, clean, and in good repair.
Okay, so it has language that they have to be clean and in...
Maintained and in good repair.
But it doesn't require an inspection by either the city or the taxi or TNV?
It's...
Yep.
It doesn't require mechanics inspection. It doesn't require any specific kind of inspection. It just says you got to make sure that the vehicle is in good condition.
Okay. Is there a motion to, for a vote? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we'll, are we ready to vote? And that fails three to two. Two to four, sorry. Okay. And just to be, for an amendment to pass, it requires four votes, not five?
Well...
I understand this one had two.
Majority of, majority of the...
Those present, and Mr. White isn't present, so now it would take three.
Four.
Three of the six.
Not approved, it'd take four of the six. Three, three was under approval.
No, on that particular motion.
There's six here, though. It takes four from the votes.
There are six people here, so it'll take four to adopt the amendment.
Yes.
Okay. James or Larry, number two?
I didn't do very good on that one, so I'll look.
Cindy, I need some help. This, this particular one says no physicals.
No physicals for any drivers, taxi, limo, carriage, or TNVs, none of them will be required to have a physical.
Okay. I'll move that.
Okay. Are we ready? And that passes four to two. To be sent back to the traffic commission. Number three. Larry?
Counselor. This one sets for, across the board, all three articles, that's taxi, limos, carriages, and TNVs. They're all required to get background inspections on the drivers and, and provide those to the city. And it requires a level of background check that would include a sex offender registry check and a violent offender registry check.
I move that.
Second.
That passes unanimously. Number four, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My suggestion was that if we do have different levels of regulations that are substantial, that the shared ride services would be required to indicate that on any software, any applications, any websites, or any advertisement, that they're not subject to the same regulations as traditional taxi services are.
So this would be contingent upon something like G8 corollary passed?
Yes.
Saying that's a good idea?
If that was adopted, if we're going to make them similar with maybe an exception here or there, I don't think it would be appropriate then in that instance, because...
David, do you think logistically we could do that? And then could we enforce it? I mean, logistically, can, I mean, I don't know if they, can they put that on their software?
Yes. I was told by a representative of one of the companies that they could put that, you know, on, on, say, their website, when you go into it, that, you know, they're not subject to the same regulations.
And that would just be in Oklahoma City, or Oklahoma, or, I don't know how that works?
If you have Oklahoma City, that's all our ordinances cover.
Yeah. Okay.
And my intent was to put the public on notice that if we were to adopt something like, something similar to the Tulsa ordinances, that they need to be aware that these services are not subject to the same regulations, same requirements. And they're assuming the risk to some degree themselves by getting into these vehicles.
Cindy, any thoughts, sir?
Well, my only thought, but I need Francis's blessing, is if you want to make this contingent, and I understood that was your intent, Councilman, we really need to see if G8 or item H is a recommendation from council. That's what would kick this in. So Francis, could we, could we hold the vote until after we do G8 and H on, on this one?
Yes, the chair can authorize items be moved to consider.
Okay. So we'll defer this to...
Out of order.
And I would agree with that. If we don't adopt those lesser requirements...
If we don't adopt those lesser requirements, there's no need for this provision. Okay. Thank you. And I agree with your contention that this is probably academic, because the legislature's going to tell us how to, maybe the fastest way to get the legislature to do something is for us to pass an ordinance, and then they'll tell us why we're wrong. Okay. Number five, Pat?
My motion was to deregulate, or my idea was to deregulate the pricing aspect of the taxi cab business. And allow them, if they wanted to post on their door side a surge charge that after six o'clock, or when it's raining, or if they're within a thousand feet of a public event, they can charge X dollars in addition to the regular posted fare. They would still have to post their fares, but they could change them. They would be allowed, and under my concept, to pose some kind of a surge charge.
So if, if somebody, in John's scenario, if somebody called on the 15th and asked for a taxi, they would have to tell them on the phone what this, what the increase in rate was?
If the surge charge applied, I think it ought to apply under a specific situation, like after eight o'clock at night, for instance, encourage cab drivers to be out.
And I want to be real clear about what this ordinance amendment does, Councilman Ryan, because maybe I'm hearing something a little different in what you're saying than what I heard before. This still leaves in place the requirement for posting with the city, which is a 30-day, am I right about that? It's a 30-day in advance posting requirement. The only thing that it really changes is that the traffic commission, it wouldn't go to them for a hearing. They, it would take out the issue of them determining fair and reasonable. But we, we left in the 30-day posting.
And we would rely on their competitors to ensure that they had fair and reasonable prices? That's my, my point.
That's my understanding of what you wanted to have done.
Councilman Ryan, if I may comment on that. I certainly agree if you could make greater limitations on that ability to increase prices. Because I agree with you, a taxi service being provided, say, after eight o'clock or sometime at night until, say, five in the morning, certainly I think those drivers are at a higher risk. In my opinion, maybe they're not by providing these services, and should be compensated for that. I agree 100% with that. I do respect Councilman Pettis's position as far as, at times, taking advantage of people on certain days. That's what I have a concern about. But your example of nighttime services, I think, certainly they need to be compensated, especially in certain situations, like if they're picking somebody up from a nightclub or a bar, you're just asking for trouble, in my opinion.
And I'm in favor of the surge pricing concept also, Pat, but I believe that the traffic commission ought to authorize the, the authorization of surge pricing, like after eight o'clock at night, and that be posted as part of the normal fare, or what other surge pricing restrictions or possibilities would be included. So I don't know how to vote on this particular amendment.
Well, what I would say from a legal perspective, I don't know the history of everything that's occurred in front of the traffic commission. I don't know if a taxi company has ever proposed a kind of a surge pricing model where on Friday and Saturday nights, a ride is going to cost more. I don't know if anybody's ever tried that. But I would say from a legal perspective, the current language we have in the ordinance says that the traffic commission will determine whether a rate is fair and reasonable. So certainly, it's within the realm of the traffic commission's ability to determine that a higher fee at certain times of the day or night is fair and reasonable. So it's possible to do what is being talked about under our current ordinance. The, the significant thing that we've done here is to completely take that out of traffic commission's ballpark in, in this proposed amendment, and, and that it's just a posting requirement 30 days in advance and on the vehicle for taxis.
Currently, how is the, the rate posted on the side of the cab? It's by miles, as I understand it. The first mile costs so much, second mile...
There's a waiting time, there's an initial charge, I think, just when you get in the cab, come on up, you'll know better than that.
Sergeant Leroy Dance with the police department, I'm a vehicle for hire inspector. Currently, the way it's done with taxis, there's initial pickup, generally a pickup charge, and then technically, I mean, we think of it as per mile, but they technically do it, I think, believe by the eighth of a mile. So, and then it also includes wait time, which is traffic delays and things like that, similar to what we propose for TNVs.
So a rider in a taxi cab really wouldn't know from the side posting how much he's going to be charged? He wouldn't have any idea of a rate, how long they're going to wait, what routes they're going to take, how many miles it is between his house and the airport, whatever?
Yeah, it all just depends on, on the distance that they're traveling on, and how long it takes to get there, and what kind of traffic, and things like that, to determine the rates. Also, I mean, they're competitive in their rates, but it also depends on what they all charge, because not all the taxi cabs are charging the exact same rate.
Thank you.
Pat, do you think, I mean, I understand the idea of the free market kind of having competition, so if you, if you surge, you may get out. But it seems like the TNVs are inherently discriminatory against those who don't have a smartphone or a credit card. And so taxi cabs would still have a monopoly on anyone, especially the poor, who didn't have a credit card and/or a smartphone. So would there be any implications of surge pricing?
Well, how many cab companies do we have in Oklahoma?
Not sure.
More than one.
Right.
So it's not a monopoly. Had two entities serving market, it's not a monopoly. That is...
Okay.
And anything we do to restrict competition, stay. And I think having the prices, cabs regulated, where Uber and like have no restriction whatsoever is unfair compromise.
Is there, is there a way to ensure that what John was talking about, that somebody waits for an hour for a cab, they're, they're desperate, and then somebody comes and says the price is going to be $100, $150? I mean, and they, is there a way to tell them ahead of time when they call that this, it's going to be $100 if we come to you?
Well, we could give, you know, have the statute person, the manager, call, give them an estimate of what it's going to cost. I can't figure because he doesn't know what the traffic situation, maybe in order on a wait time because of traffic.
Councilman, I may also add that the way it's currently done now, that the traffic commission, when, when a company initially opens up for business, they, of course, are in front of the traffic commission, and they tell their posted rates. We do have the 30-day requirement, but they, if they decide to change their rates, but currently the way it's written, that even though after that 30-day period, that new rate does not have to go in front of the traffic commission.
Thank you very much, Sergeant.
So Cindy, if we pass this amendment, would it be possible for the taxi companies to present proposals to the traffic commission, and then we get...
If you pass this amendment to our proposed ordinance, it would not go to the traffic commission on rates.
I guess I'm asking, should, if we pass this amendment and send it back to the traffic commission, will the traffic commission have some play to maybe tweak it after they talk to the taxi companies and, and give, I mean, they're an advisory body.
They're an advisory body, and they can make a recommendation or choose to not make a recommendation back to council.
Yes. You know, I would, on this particular issue, I think it'd be well worth getting input, obtaining input from the taxi companies themselves as to what they would be comfortable with. For example, if they said, we feel like we should get a, a higher rate of, say, 25% as an example, above our normal rates between 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM in, in the next morning, and let them come back to us and say, we will work within the current guidelines, but here's how we would like to see changes take place with respect to pricing. Because I still think, as I said two weeks ago, in my opinion, and to other business people, they have an advantage from the business community. They, we are comfortable with the way they charge us, how they operate, and the regulations that they are subject to. If we begin taking away all those advantages, then they are placed on this, on a, a, a very competitive situation with these shared ride services. And I think it would be to their benefit to retain at least some of those regulations and maintain a competitive advantage from the business community. So I would just ask that they provide some input as to what they feel like would be an appropriate way to charge for their services.
Pat, how would you like to proceed?
I'm in approval of my resolution.
Okay.
And the traffic commission can tweak it any way they'd like. I have no, no pride of authorship here.
So really, you're saying you'd, you'd like the traffic commission to look at it, talk to the taxi companies, and come back with us when it...
I'd like to see them deregulated. If there's significant reason this doesn't work, then I'll be glad to follow my...
Okay. Are we ready to vote? And that passes five to two. Six is the sexual orientation. I think that this is primarily a clerical. I think when it was presented to us initially, it was felt like it was already in there. This would be consistent with the city's employment, anti-discrimination, language. Any thoughts on this?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do the current taxi companies have this provision in, in their regulations? I mean, as far as...
No, this would, but this would change it for all three articles.
Have we ever had an issue with this right before us?
I, I don't know. Not that we're aware of.
This kind of falls into the same category as my provision. If we adopt the last one or the next to the last one, I think that's a part of it, and it comes into play. I don't know. I don't see a need for this particular issue because, again, we're talking at different times about free enterprises, free enterprise, and the ability to earn as much money as possible. I don't see somebody foregoing a fare in any way.
Right. I think it's a clerical. I think, again, I mean, a lot of this stuff has never come up. We've never had an Uber or Lyft ride where the car broke down, or a lot of the things that we've talked about have never come up, but we're, we're doing them. I think this is just a matter of policy. It's consistent with prior policy decisions by the council and...
My only problem with this, Ed, quite honestly, I understand how we adopted this for us dealing with our employees. dealing with our employees. We're placing this as a requirement on a for-profit, private enterprise. My position is, even though they want, like a franchise, to conduct business within Oklahoma City, it's a free enterprise, it's a private company. I don't see this particular need being placed on them. So I do see a distinction between the City of Oklahoma City adopting these rules, which I believe are appropriate, but to make this a requirement on private enterprise, where does that stop, then? Do we start, you know, making these types of requirements on other types of businesses that may do transactions with the City of Oklahoma City?
Well, we're going to make requirements on race, gender, religion. I mean, is that, are you relying on federal law or the absence of it, or to make that distinction between—
Well, I'm trying to get some input. How often does somebody refuse a ride because it's a woman versus a man, or because of that person's race? And are we just adding regulations for the sake of adding regulations? And are these private companies that are attempting to make as much profit as they can, and therefore, they're incentivized to get as much fare as possible? That's the distinction I see.
So should we drop race, gender, religious, since that doesn't happen?
Yeah, I would say so, yeah, because let those companies say, "Hey, I want to make as much money as possible, so I'm going to try to get every fare I can get." I mean, that's how I would look at it.
Okay. Any other thoughts, or? Is there a second?
Thank you.
And that fails three to four. Number seven, John?
Thank you. Cindy, quick question. Under current law, can taxi cabs deny service based on location?
I don't believe there's any provision about that under the current code or in the proposed ordinance.
Okay. The only reason why I ask for this amendment is to ensure that if somebody can afford the service, no matter what part of town they request the service from, that they'll be able to access the service, such as if somebody lived off of Southeast 25th and High, that they will be able to, if they have the means to pay for it, then they should not be denied service based off of location. I have several years of experience of being denied access because of location. I just want to make sure that certain communities, if they can afford it, then they should be able to have the services.
And I shouldn't have hesitated to answer your question, because I have my note right in front of me. This amendment would apply across the board to all three articles.
Because right now, it applies to taxi cabs, correct?
No. There are no requirements currently.
Okay.
We don't require taxi cabs to—
Am I wrong? I'm sorry.
And the only reason, because in my meeting with the taxi cab, they said, "Well, they have to pick up, they have to, if somebody requests services, they have to go." If the taxi cabs have to go, Lyft, Uber, Uber, Mohu needs to go as well.
Currently, the way the ordinance is written is that taxi cab cannot refuse a person if they have the money and the means to pay for it. But the only exception there is, is if a person themselves is being disorderly at the time of pickup or something like that. That's the only exception.
Okay. I just want to even playing field. Somebody can afford the service, no matter where they're at, that they be able to access the services.
And that's the way it currently is, and I—
So is that currently, across the board, as the proposed amendment, I mean, the proposed ordinance change?
That particular ordinance is strictly in the taxi.
So would, so that's just taxi? Now, Cindy, how would I include that for Lyft, Uber, Taxi, whomever, for it to be across the board?
I want to make sure that I'm correct. I know we have a right of refusal in our current set of ordinance books, that you can't refuse people service unless they're disorderly, drunk, that sort of thing. But I don't think that's specific to origin or destination, is it?
No, it's not specific to origin or destination.
Okay, so the origin and destination language currently is not in the current ordinance book, it's not in the current proposed ordinance, it is only in your amendment, and the amendments that you'll be voting on applies to all three articles equally across the board. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a question, a scenario, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to drag this out, but I know I am. What if a particular driver gets, because I'm concerned about the ability to enforce it with Uber and Lyft, because each driver accepts that ride, you know, the first driver to hit the button to say, "I'm picking this person up," gets it, in my understanding. But let's say the destination is, I hate to say this, but a strip club or something, and the driver says, "Hey, I'm not going to take anybody, because I don't believe I should drive to those types of establishments." And that's just one example. I think there are other situations where, "Hey, I've got a concern going into this particular part of the city." I grew up in Capitol Hill, so I've kind of gotten over that over the years, but some people may have that. If that driver, who's an independent driver, says, "I'm a little bit concerned about either picking up someone there or taking someone to this area of the city," hey, he or she is missing out on a fare. And if that person has made a decision, you know what, the potential money I can make is not worth the potential risk that I perceive, how can we require that person to assume that risk? It's just a point. And I understand your position, John, I really do, and I want to try to find a way to serve those people in disadvantaged areas, but yet, at the other side of me, I see a person in business for themselves, and if they either have personal concerns overtaking that person to a particular location, or picking them up from that particular location, or if there's a nightclub, or there's just excess drinking and people are throwing up, I don't want that person in my car.
I can see nightclubs, I can see strip clubs, however the case might be, but again, if it's in an area that somebody can afford service, then they, then the company should not be able to refuse service. Because I still question whether Uber, Lyft would be able to serve some of the underserved areas. We make the taxi cabs go. I think if somebody be able, if somebody can afford the services, then I think Lyft and you, it should apply across the board.
There is another scenario, which we have seen in multiple cities, where, I mean, Uber and Lyft are not homogeneous, they're competitors as well. And so you have what my 10-year-old calls ding-dong ditching, where you knock on the doorbell and then run. You have coordinated efforts, where you call and arrange rides, you send people out to locations, and then nobody's there. So with a 620-square-mile city, if you're saying that you have to go almost to Newcastle, or you have to go, you know, to the far reaches of the city, and then, I mean, do we want to be the parent, making sure that somebody actually did go to this location when they were, when they were called?
If they can afford the services, then I think Uber, Lyft, and taxis ought to go. That's just me.
Okay.
So I'm going to move the motion, but if this fails, and if I see a pattern that Lyft or Uber is not serving the people who I represent, I will bring it back.
Now, there is, I mean, there is some data, maybe, that Uber, I mean, do you, are you aware of data, either way, that maybe Uber and Lyft are increasing mobility options in underserved areas?
Well, the data for us, for us, Oklahoma City is not there yet. I don't know if there's a way for us to track it, but I'm just saying, if I see people who I serve or in other areas are not being served, I'm going to bring this item back.
And John, I would agree with that. I see an opportunity, though, for somebody that currently lives in those underserved areas. If they have a vehicle, "Hey, nobody else wants to serve this area, I've got it all to myself, and I'm just going to make hay while I can." That's how free enterprise should work. You know, there's a need, I'm going to be able to satisfy that need, and I'm going to make money by satisfying that need. That's what we should encourage, free enterprise, instead of a lot of regular—
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay. And that fails three to four. Which brings us to eight, which is basically, does not put them on, this only addresses Article 3, which is the TNVs. It's not exactly like Tulsa, in that it has insurance requirements, it has other conforms to Oklahoma City, some things in Oklahoma City. But basically, it shifts primary responsibility for, it standardizes, standardizes what's required of all the TNVs, and requires the TNV companies to do the inspections, make sure the drivers, ensure public safety, basically. It has, I think it has, it does have language. Do we do the Minneapolis language?
I did not put that in there.
Okay. It's not just Tulsa that's done this, there's at least five cities that have done this, but Minneapolis, for example, even though the TNV is responsible for the permitting process, there is still criminal liability of the driver, that the city can go after the driver if they didn't have those things in place.
I did put some wording in there that a driver will be responsible and could be held criminally liable if he drives without the requirements that are there for the TNC, the insurance and that sort of thing. I didn't use the joint and sever liability, because that's a civil standard, and municipalities, at least in Oklahoma, can't determine civil standards for this, for the civil proceedings in court.
So I'm just, I'm asking this to go back to the Traffic Commission, for them to analyze whether the, who would be responsible for the permitting process? If we want to extend this to taxis and limos, that's an entirely different issue, but this is just, do we want, do we want the TN, do we want the city out of that process?
So just to be clear, if you voted to send this to Traffic Commission, and it came back in its same form, it would leave, if you vote to approve the next item, which is G9, it would leave the proposed things in Articles 1 and 2 for taxis, limos, and carriages that we originally sent to you. And this would only impact Article 3, which is the TNVs. It essentially removes the permitting process of the drivers, it removes the physical requirement, and it removes the vehicle inspection to be done by the city. However, it does maintain that the licensee, which would be that company, Uber or Lyft, et cetera, that would have to do the background checks on their drivers, would have to have vehicle inspections done for the cars, which our understanding is they do some level of that already. It does maintain our more up-to-date insurance requirements, and I think those are probably the biggest issues.
Could somebody amend this amendment now for it to include taxis and limos as well as TNVs? I mean, if we want to make that policy decision now, can we just, can we tell the Traffic Commission?
It's not, it's not before you, so you couldn't, you couldn't vote on that. Now, you could send me some instructions that you want, the same things that are being removed from Article 3, that you would like to see them removed from Article 1 and 2, and when it comes back to you for final hearing, we could present that to council. I'd find, yeah, I'll have to sit down with Francis and figure out how that could be all done, but today, you can't vote on that.
Okay.
Your Honor, I need some assistance from you. Eight and nine are similar, is that the statement?
No. Eight, nine is the original ordinance.
Okay.
It's eight and—
H.
H, the next item, H.
Okay, so now, do we need to adopt eight and item H, or could we just adopt item eight?
In fact, I don't want H, it was just on there for—
Okay, so this is your preference.
Right. I don't, I wouldn't, I would like to drop H.
Okay. How would you refer, how would you feel about referring to this as the Minneapolis model, as opposed to the Tulsa model?
I'd be all for that.
Okay. Well, then, I'm okay with that as well, because I do like having those requirements placed at the company level for continued inspections of the vehicles, reviewing and requiring the drivers to go through background check, physical, those kinds of things. I think that's important, and so I would concur with using the Minneapolis model.
Vice Mayor, if I could say one more thing. I do feel an incumbent, from a legal advisory perspective, to tell you kind of the practical and legal ramifications of dropping the driver permitting process. The driver permitting process was put there in the first place so that we would be able to leverage enforcement, because we would know who the drivers are, because they would come in for their permits. What we've heard over and over from Uber and Lyft is that they will not provide us records, they won't even tell us the names of their drivers. So the only way, if there's no driver permitting process, the only way that enforcement will happen is on a complaint basis, where the complainant can give enough information to identify the driver. And I'm not saying good or bad either way, I just want you to know what, what that would entail.
I would recommend, based upon Mrs. Richards' comments, that if we need to make an amendment to this, to provide also for permitting for the drivers.
And that, so that's, so Uber and Lyft have told you specifically, I mean, that they will not provide you the names, even after they go through the process, they won't tell you who is or is not a driver?
That's correct.
And I think, me personally, I think that's wrong. I think City of Oklahoma City should know every driver who picks up somebody, whether it's for hire, technology, whatever you want to call it, the city should know who those drivers are.
Let me ask you this, would that become public information?
Yes.
So, for example, let's say a taxi driver would like to participate in Uber or Lyft, they would have to go through a process, become permitted, and then the taxi company could then see that, "Hey, I've got an employee who's also providing services for Uber and Lyft."
Not only that, but the taxi and limo companies requested specifically, at the beginning of this process, that we have a provision that would prohibit a driver for one type of vehicle from being a driver for another. So a taxi driver would not be permitted as a TNV driver.
But that is not incorporated into the proposal?
It's in G9.
It is in G9?
Yes.
Why would we, why would we do that?
Because my understanding from the taxi companies is that the taxi driver will use their, the company's taxi and go off taxi time and still use that taxi vehicle to go do an Uber, or I should say, a TNV ride.
I thought there were independent contractors that owned their own vehicles.
I think for some companies, but not all.
But you're restricting it for all?
Yes.
In G9? I mean, that is very common practice, is it not? In many cities, where taxi drivers, on their own time, drive for Uber or Lyft, and we in G9 would specifically preclude individual drivers from that practice.
I would hesitate to say anything that's a common practice right now for TNVs. It's in flux everywhere.
Sure.
But I would say that in G9, it prohibits any driver from driving another type of vehicle for hire, whether it be TNVs or taxis or that sort of thing. Now, we did create one exception that allows companies to enter into agreement— Now, we did create one exception, that allows companies to enter into agreements with each other, to allow drivers to drive other vehicles. So if they can come present an agreement, then that would be allowable.
But presumably, the taxi companies would never agree to let their drivers drive for Uber or Lyft?
I don't, I don't think they could prevent that. If they wanted, if a taxi driver wanted to get a permit, and be permitted with Uber, and use their own private cars, they could still do that, they just couldn't use the taxi cab car. They would have to use their private car and be permitted. I mean, part of the problem is insurance, too, because their, their cab is insured by Yellow Cab Company, and now they're gonna start working for Uber, which is a different insurance policy. So there's, there's issues there with using the same type of vehicle.
So we're not precluding them from that, they just have to get a second permit?
I don't think it would preclude them from that. There's nothing in the ordinance that says they could not do that, but they would have to, they would have to get a separate, and you, we could write, you could, you could amend it that way, if it's not written that way, where they could. As long as they went through the permitting process, I don't know how you could really
I think Chief City's probably right, and I just have to apologize that I said no other permit. I'd like to say I have every phase of this memorized, but I don't. So, I, I think that's correct. I think it's more focused on the vehicle. You can't drive that, let's say, yellow cab, as an Uber.
Yeah, and I would agree with that requirement. Just as you've mentioned, it's a, it's a vehicle that is covered by their insurance for nothing, for no other reason. So if, if a cab driver wanted to provide services through Uber or Lyft, they would have to provide their own private vehicle to do so. And I'd be fine with that provision.
So that's not only in the proposed, but I believe we also maintain that in G8.
Okay. Any other comments on G8?
Now, these things that we've talked about, do we want to incorporate those two? One, about restricting a driver, a taxi driver, from only using their private vehicle, should they choose to become a driver for Uber or Lyft, in, in this recommendation? Or do we just?
It may be covered. I think Chief City said it's not precluded if they get a separate application, right?
Correct.
I would just want a, a more specific language that says a cab could not be used to provide
I think it essentially does, Councilman.
Okay.
I believe it essentially
What, what happens if we, we're gonna equilibrate everything, we're gonna get rid of painting the cars, you have an independent contractor who owns his own car, drives for the cab company, it's not yellow, it just looks like a normal car?
Yeah.
And we're gonna say that they can't drive that car for Uber or Lyft?
Well, I'm not agreeing to take away the special painting for cab companies.
Okay.
Well, Councilman, I think that if you did, they'd have to have a separate application, and you'd have to have an application to provide under both, because of the
And you just use the same car?
You know, we're, we're, we're supposing that we're gonna pass this next version, and as we do that
Right.
We might need to come back and address that issue.
Okay. Is there a motion on G8?
[inaudible]
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Well, my understanding is, we would be saying to the Traffic Commission, which is an advisory policy, that, that as a policy, we would prefer the companies to do the permitting process rather than the city. That, that's the crux of G8.
G8 being
No.
G8, G8 is just another amendment to the ordinance.
It's just saying we want
Like 1 through 7 were.
G9, whatever.
No, G9, we shouldn't vote on. We're gonna recommend not to vote on G9, because we think
H.
Yeah. No, G9, we're not gonna vote on either, because we're gonna come back and, and send this, because if we adopt G9, we're adopting the new ordinance. So we're gonna take the amendment that we adopted today, and send it back to the Traffic Commission, with the ninth, and we're gonna recommend that we bring it back a month from today, in four weeks, with the recommendation from the Traffic Commission
Right, and whatever.
For, for final adoption.
So all we're voting on G8 is that we would like the Traffic Commission to look at, and, and come up with a policy that, like Minneapolis, moves responsibility for permitting the drivers, the inspections, the physical exam, if you do it, all that, to the TNV and the taxi company, rather than the city?
We're gonna call that the vice option.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Cindy, your comment about the company refusing to send data would impact this particular resolution right here?
The G8?
G8.
Um, G8 gets rid of the permitting process for TNVs, and
And so, so no longer would I in the city, or the police department, or anybody, know who is a registered TNV driver?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
I, I mean, could we get that in writing from them? That they're, that they're not willing to share that data with the City of Oklahoma City? If it, if this, if it depended on this passing, they wouldn't, still would not share that data? I mean, I understand they've told that to you verbally.
I can't make them present anything in writing, they certainly said it with all of us in the room several times. They enter into privacy agreements with their drivers, and they believe that presenting us with the information, including the names, would be a violation of those privacy agreements. So that's when, you know, we started discussing, okay, then the driver will have to bring us in the OSBI background check, the driver will have to do this and that. And that takes away the, the issue from the TNC not being able to present us the information.
With respect to that, is there a way that you could receive information, like a permit or some other type of information, and not make it a public record?
No, I looked at the Open Records Act while we were going through this, and we, virtually everything would be in open record.
Okay.
And an officer in the field who had a traffic violation wouldn't be able to check with a TNV and confirm that they were or were not?
In our current proposed ordinance, we put in a provision, I think it was Uber that specifically agreed, to have a person, whose name they would give us, be available in exigent circumstances, let's say a kidnapping occurred. And so, that person, for the company, would have to make the decision, that it's an exigent circumstance, and then they would ping the driver's phone, or something like that, to find a location, and, and give us that information.
That really bothers me, that they won't share the That they won't share the information to us. And, and I would, the only way I would, if that, if this provision prevents that from happening, then the only way I'd vote for this, is if we could have an amendment to this provision, that said that, to some degree, all drivers would be made known to the police department, or some agency within the city.
I, I admit it's problematic for me as well, and I agree, that if, can we add that language to this amendment?
Add, add what language? I'm sorry.
That you could adopt this if they would be willing to share that, that data with us.
Um, well, the only people that we've had at the table, the only companies have been Uber and Lyft, and Lyft only recently came to the table. There's nothing binding about an agreement at the table, it's only binding if it goes into an ordinance. Again, the problem with being able to even enforce that, Lyft, I think, suggested, put in an audit right in your ordinance. You know what, if Lyft and Uber don't have headquarters, or an office, within our corporate limits, we can't really make them do anything. So the, the whole thing was about having the drivers that are in our corporate limits, to be able to leverage enforcement through them, because we can bind them under our ordinances.
Ms. Richards, I think the mayor's just asking, can we make an amendment to this section right now, today, that says we are going to add a requirement that they, that these shared ride services would provide a listing of all current drivers to the city?
You absolutely could, and, and the practical ramification of that is, if they won't, then no license will be issued to the company.
Okay. Well then, I would propose an amendment to Section 8, that would require the shared services to provide a listing of all drivers to the city.
I second. All in favor of David's amendment to the amendment? So that passes six to one. Is there a motion on G8 as amended?
Submoved.
Second. And that passes four to three. One, two, three, four to three. Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I was making a note, what was the last vote on?
Amendment to add a requirement that the shared services
That was the first vote.
Oh, this, oh, I'm sorry.
The last motion was to approve the amendment as amended.
Okay.
And if
G8, with the
G8.
Okay.
So, on A9, if we pass that, we're gonna For this for four weeks.
That would be my recommendation, but we do need to go back and address now Councilman Greenwell's item four.
Correct. Okay, so with G8 as amended passing, we
So, with, with that last amendment, did we, did we really just say that we want to make it completely inequitable between the three chapters? Is that what we just said?
No, we didn't, we didn't address anything with one and two, this is only three. If the Traffic Commission wants to put all three of them under an umbrella, they can do that. And if the council wants to tell the Traffic Commission right now, not only do we want TNVs to do the licensing process, we want taxi and limo companies to do it as well, then let's tell them right now. We want all three to do it the same way. I, I know
Yeah, we probably should have made that amendment before we adopted it, number eight.
Is, is it two eight?
You can rescind your action, I assume? Can they rescind their action on eight?
Someone who voted for the motion can make a motion to reconsider the vote whereby it was approved, and
Is there enough interest to put, to have the same policy for all three? I know that Pat's in favor. Okay, so I'll rescind?
Well, I think there's another way that possibly you could do it.
Okay.
If you went ahead, Mr. Couch, and, and if they went ahead and considered G9, you could vote against it. So any of the, I mean, G8 completely replaces Article III. If you vote against G9, that takes away the amendments that have been proposed under one and two. And then if, if the instruction is to make it
I don't, I really think it'd be cleaner going the other way, Cindy.
Well, I'm not sure I understand if we rescind what was just done, that, how that's gonna make it any clearer.
We're gonna rescind the action on eight, that puts eight back on the floor, they can amend eight, and then re-adopt it.
So we'll, we'll see how that amendment sounds, if I can figure it out.
I move to rescind our action on G8. Is there a second? All in favor? And that passed unanimously. Now I'd move a G8 with two amendments. One is that a requirement that TNVs show with the City of Oklahoma City, a list of their drivers. The second is that the same action that we're adopting in Article III, for TNVs, also apply to taxi, to those in, in, in one and two. So you're, you have the same policy for everyone. So I move G8 with those two amendments. Is there a second? Or a question? Okay. And that fails three to four. Okay. G8 is still before you. So G8 now is before us, without the two amendments. So I'll go back to the amendment that passed, amend G8 to say that the TNVs must share the list of the drivers with the City of Oklahoma City, but we're not saying that all three, that taxis and limos are under the same rules. So this is basically the one that we just passed before, and rescinded, and now we're, we're gonna vote on it again. Is there a second?
Second.
We're just voting on the amendment?
We're voting on G8 with the amendment. G8 with, what
No, we're voting just on the amendment first. Just
Okay, this is
TNV drivers.
Okay, so this is an amendment to make the TNVs report to the City of Oklahoma City, the list of their drivers. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Wow. And that, okay, oh, that's four to three. Passes four to three. Okay. I'll now move G8 as amended. Is there a second? All in favor? Now it fails three to four. It previously passed, but it now fails three to four. So, that takes care of David's G4, moves us to G9, which were
And I would recommend that we defer to that for a month, until October 7th.
So I'll move that we defer that for a month.
Second.
All in favor? Passes five to one.
This is deferring it.
I will move to rescind H, do I need to do that?
Strike.
Strike H. All in favor? Six, Larry needs to vote. Okay.
Councilman, if I could just summarize for a sec, oh
Yeah.
If I could just summarize, because I think, I want to be very, very clear here. We have, have passed, items two, three, and five were passed, items one, six, seven, and eight failed. Item four was Dean Moot. So we're passing three amendments, items two, three, and five, to the Traffic Commission for consideration, to be rolled into the ordinance nine. It will be going to the Traffic Commission next Monday, and we'll bring it back here for final adoption on October 7th.
Any questions? Well, Pete, you were right, and I was wrong. It didn't take 15 minutes. Clear as mud.
Francis, do we need an official action on G4?
Just no action was given.
Okay.
Moving to eight, I, ordinance on final hearing, these are six, six right away.
Move for approval.
All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Just each one, individual?
Uh, individually, or?
Yes, individually, that was the first time.
John, can you move all the six? Just individually?
Two, right two.
Oh, move for approval.
Second.
All in favor? And I, three?
Move for approval.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Four?
Move for approval, second.
Passes unanimously, six?
Move for approval, second.
Passes unanimously. J is a public hearing, changing the name Total Care to EMS Care.
This was introduced last week, and, and that's bringing forward to the public hearing process.
Is there anybody who signed up to speak on this? Is there a movement to move this, motion to move this forward? Passes unanimously. K is a public hearing on
These are fees related to the Will Rogers Garden Exhibition Center. It was presented by Doug Cooper last week, or two weeks ago, and it's the public hearing today.
Move, got it. Second.
All in favor? L
L is a public hearing on the modifications to the close-to-home fishing locations. Again, Doug Cooper gave a presentation on it two weeks ago.
Passes unanimously. M
M is an ordinance to be introduced, and Batina is here today to explain it to us.
Very briefly, in January, the council adopted an ordinance that allowed us to transfer kittens and, litters of kittens and puppies directly to foster, and not keep them in the shelter. This ordinance allows us to, to transfer the mother, the nursing mother with that litter, those litters, when we need to.
Okay. All in favor? Passes unanimously. N is an ordinance to be introduced.
This enhances our public nuisance ordinance. Chief City's here to top this about a minute.
Okay.
Passes unanimously. N is an ordinance to be introduced.
This enhances our public nuisance ordinance. Chief City's here to talk just about a minute.
Okay, briefly, the public nuisance ordinance, nuisance abatement ordinance, now includes drive-by shootings, losing police officer, the use of real property for such crimes as drug sales, prostitution, adult entertainment, bar and tavern violations. What we want to add to that use of real property is disturbances in an open lot, which would include like a parking lot of a bar or club. It would include the parking lot of a apartment complex, which we've had some issues with in trying to get apartment complexes to address. So this adds that portion of that. It does not include single homes, duplexes, those types of things, but it would include apartments, taverns, those types of things. The second part of this we wanted to add was illegal, adding illegal speed contests. So if it's an illegal speed contest, then the ordinance would allow us to abate that by impounding that vehicle for up to 90 days.
And Councilman Greiner has been working with us to review those ordinances.
Yeah, and I had a question about, because whenever I first started talking about this, my goal was really to address the chronic properties, you know, and somehow figure out how to penalize the ones that are chronically doing it, say, three times a month or four times a month or whatever the number is. And I don't think that that part of it is in this, right? I still think that that's kind of important to do, to try and get to a good resolution. I don't-
There has to be, in any of these nuisances, there has to be a pattern where they've accorded. In most cases, we attempt to get voluntary compliance. We put them on notice, they can abate the problems. If they'll abate it within, I think, I believe it's 10 days. So we monitor that, and then if it's a continuing problem, then at some point we would take them to, it would be a civil issue, take them to district court. So that is, that's the way this ordinance is really enforced now.
And it's still only related to criminal activity, not code violations, correct?
Right, it'd be some violent type activity, could be continuous fights, could be drug sales, could be prostitution. So yes.
Okay. I would like to see something, continue to think about with the, just the code violators, the continual code violators. I think that brings down neighborhoods, and it's something that I hear just about every neighborhood meeting I go to, is that they have one or two homes in their neighborhood that just doesn't get kept up. So I think that, I like this, and I think it kind of extended out to apply to different things.
Does this involve seizure of property in any way?
Not permanent seizure of property. It's the vehicles, like are used in prostitution, to facilitate prostitution, vehicles for, that are involved in pursuits, eluding police officers. Those vehicles are impounded for up to 90 days. Now, if it's, if the owner comes forward who's not involved in the crime and makes claim to the vehicle, then that vehicle's released back to the owner. If it's not, if it's the person that was actually, that owns the car, that was involved in the pursuit, was involved in the crime, then that, that is abated by putting that car into impoundment for up to 90 days.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a second? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item O?
This is it. This is a new ordinance regarding Martin Nature Park. It's been before the Parks and Recreation. Doug?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, City Council, Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. We've had an increased amount of users bringing their dogs or other pets on leashes to Martin Park. It's causing quite a bit of a stir. Nature Park has been set aside to improve the habitat of our natural residences of that area of the community. The owners aren't being good stewards. They aren't cleaning up after their animals and things along those lines. So it's creating a nuisance for our other visitors. They also have a habit of taking their dogs off the leashes and letting them run, and therefore they chase the wildlife in the park. When the Friends of Martin Park brought this, we started looking at other activities around Easter time, when people get the ducks and the bunnies and that sort of thing. They grow. They don't want them anymore. Have a habit of bringing them out to Martin Park as well, as well as other trapped animals are being released at Martin Park. We'd like your authority to enforce a new ordinance or amendment to the ordinance that wouldn't allow any pets in the parks or the release of any type of animals into that park, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
But as I understand it, it makes an exception for service-
That is correct. We never try to change the ADA laws as it relates to service animals.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item P is public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anybody that's signed up to speak?
No.
Is there a motion?
No.
Second? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item Q is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Anybody signed up to speak on this? Is there a motion?
No.
Second? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item R is a public hearing. And are we going to hear from Chief Bryant?
I think Doug, or Craig Freeman and Chief Bryant, one of the two of them are supposed to be here. This is a change in the sales tax fund hearing regarding supplemental funding for construction of Fire Station 26.
This item, this is just a resolution for the, fire sales tax resolution to allow for additional funding for the fire station over the original budget that we had within the GO bonds. So it's just additional funding for that fire station.
Any questions? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Next is revocable right-of-way use permits. And we have three individuals, and I apologize for the hour and appreciate waiting to address us. And we'll start with number one, Alzheimer's Association, Oklahoma Chapter, Walk.
I'm Colin McKeon, the Walk Coordinator for the Alzheimer's Association, Oklahoma Chapter, and we're here today to ask for the permit, the right-of-way permit for September 27th to hold the Walk 10 Alzheimer's. The Walk 10 Alzheimer's is the largest event held in Oklahoma for the benefit of fighting Alzheimer's disease. There's over 60,000 Oklahomans who suffer from this disease and over 180,000 who are caregivers for these people. We raise approximately $350,000. 60% of that stays here in Oklahoma City to help families and caregivers and provide them support. 30% goes to research. We are the largest funder of, non-government funder of Alzheimer's research. We have submitted all the proper applications as far as the route, the waste management, safety barricades, et cetera, to the city, and we're here just to ask unanimous approval to hold this event.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 2 is Wiggle Out Loud, September 14th. Hi.
Hi there, yes, this is our second event for Wiggle Out Loud. It's an active family music festival, kind of encouraging, well, it is encouraging arts and music. There's arts and music activities as well as wellness activities, as well as healthier food truck options. Last year, it was really well-received, and we're hoping to do the same this year. It's this Sunday, September 14th, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 3 is the Tap and Run on September 27th. Has anybody signed up? No. May, or that's number four. So this one? Second? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Now's number four, the Down Syndrome Festival on September 20th.
Hi. I am Megan Winkler. I'm the Executive Director of the Down Syndrome Association of Central Oklahoma. We are hoping to have our annual festival in 5K September 20th at the Bricktown Ballpark. And we will be shutting down the streets for about an hour and a half to do the 5K, but after that, all the activities will move inside of the ballpark. This is the largest fundraising event for the Down Syndrome Association. It's also our largest awareness event of the year, and all the money we raise stays right here in Oklahoma to help families who have children with Down Syndrome.
Thank you. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item T, revocable permits. Number one is the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation with the canoe marathon world championship, which is on September 24th to the 28th.
Yep, I am Kelsey Dolphin. I'm with Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation, and this event is the first canoe world marathon held in the U.S. It's a five-day event with athletes from over 20 countries, and it includes opening ceremonies on Thursday, a paddle fest on Saturday, masters racing, world championships, and Pan Am championships. Any questions?
Thank you. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 2 is the Oklahoma Regatta Festival on October 2nd to the 5th.
It is the annual festival that includes Blue Party, night racing, dragon boat racing, Head of the Oklahoma, food trucks, beer garden, and exhibitors.
All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Eight U is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City E D T. Ben?
Yes, sir, this is just an administrative item. When we issue the bonds, we transfer the funds, the funds automatically go into a city account. And what we're doing is seeking authorization. This is what we've done in the past, we're transferring the fund, getting authorization to transfer those funds to the Economic Development Trust, so we can use those to fund projects.
With, I'm sorry, with the 23 million that we allocated today, how much is left of the 2007 GO bond?
Mr. Couch, how's that number?
56, we use 56, obligated 56 million, 798, so that leaves roughly 20, 17 or so.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move the item in second.
Passes unanimously. Item V, I understand we don't need executive session, this is a resolution authorizing representation. We're, oh, is there a motion?
No. No. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second? Passes unanimously. Eight W, I understand we don't need executive session, so we just take no action. Motion to strike. Is there a second? Passes unanimously. Nine A, our claims recommended for approval. Has anybody signed up to speak? All in favor? And there are no claims recommended for denial, so items from Council, Pat?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
John? David? James? Larry? No? Yeah, okay.
I'd like to think about, for the balance of the, the balance of this calendar year, to move the items on the agenda concerning the permits, the revenue permits. Those generally take five minutes for all of them, and we end up having people, many times volunteers, a lot of them are done by nonprofits, and the people that are down here voluntarily and taking a half-day off work. And I'd like to just experiment with the idea of doing it early in the agenda, at the very front of the agenda.
What if it was right after the op-
You know, if it doesn't work, we can go back to the other way.
How about the head of the items for individual consideration?
How about right after office of the mayor? These quick ones at the very beginning.
So?
I had no idea it'd get competing ideas. That tells us about all those four to three votes we had, well, it made Meg the queen when she comes back.
But I just, I think it's a great idea. It doesn't matter.
Just earlier, so they don't have, like, these people waited, those people just got through, that took about two minutes to do that, and they waited almost four hours to, for that.
Yeah, I think just as long as it's before the consent docket, I would think.
Yeah, yeah. Wherever, I leave it up to staff, but I'd just like to see it done. We could just experiment with it, and if we, if it becomes cumbersome, we don't have to keep doing it. But we have so many people down here that occasionally, we, last week, the meeting went so long that most of the people left, and they would have liked to have made a presentation. And anyway, just, if we, everybody thinks that's a good idea, we could try it for a little bit.
So get it from page 33 up to page 3.
You can-
Anywhere before the consent docket. Let's see, so that's, Pete, that's, anything else? Anything else? Okay, so that takes us to city manager reports.
Just want to highlight the sales tax collections for the month of August. Sales tax was strong. It was, you know, we projected 4%, and it came in right at 4%. So August was a strong month for us.
Great. Williams and payroll. Citizens to be heard, and we have two.
As they're coming up, can I ask that we consider the emergency on item 8D? That was the Stockyards bid, and I've been requested by staff to get the emergency on the ordinance.
I thought the companion item was an emergency item, but I guess we need a separate-
Well, it was an ordinance, but we didn't adopt it with emergency.
Okay. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Citizens to be heard, we have two.
My name is Marguerite Weinman, and I live in Ward 1, Councilman Greiner's district, and Mayor Shaddad, and honorable distinguished councilman. Linda and I are here as ordinary citizens to discuss some questions we have regarding the city's policy on renting to public facilities. The news has reported that as long as a group signs an agreement to abide by the rules of the rental agreement for a facility and does nothing illegal, and that they pay the rent, there are no other restrictions. My question is, would the Ku Klux Klan be allowed to rent a public facility for a Would an Islamic group be able to rent a public facility for a meeting?
An Islamic group?
As long as they follow the agreement that was signed with the facility. If the answer to those two questions is maybe or no, then my question is, why is it legal for the most wicked and dangerous group in the world to be allowed to rent a public facility? I'm referring to Satan and his army of angels, his army of devils. Their only purpose is to destroy our worship of our God. This ritual that they are planning to have on September 21st, 2014, in the Civic Center is an attack on our religion. And we are here to ask that the council vote to cancel the agreement with the satanic group for this affair on the 21st of September.
Thank you very much.
Good morning to the mayor in his absence, members of the city council, Mayor Shadid in his absence. I would ask, as the professional consideration was afforded to Sarge on 1/9/2010, of an eight-minute address, three and a half minutes passed, when Mayor Cornett asked me to stop, that you allow me to not be stopped at three minutes, but it ain't going to be eight. I'm asking, it's up to you guys. It's up to you guys. This is that important. There are members of the fictitious Friends of the Family that are sitting in front of their computers in eight different states, Cludon, Maryland, Connecticut, DC. It's come to our attention that there is a definite need across the United States for a position of leadership. a position of leadership by a governmental entity to address the issue of the community's failure to participate in policing itself. There are a group of people that have comprised a outlined, detailed, uh, plan for a series of public service announcements that are designed to arouse the awareness of men first, arouse the awareness of the community, arouse the awareness of our law enforcement professionals so that the likelihood of another Arkansas does not exist. Mr. Holder requested the states in the close proximity to Arkansas, whether or not there were instances of such likely or like occurrences. We don't want to answer that. We would rather pull together the leaders of my city, my community, as my father attempted to in nineteen forty-eight, and lead the nation. Just like I told Steve Hill when he was talking to me out in the foyer. When Mayor Cornet stepped out of the curtain at the Republican National Conference, he looked like a kid in a candy store, because he was staring up at all the people. Well, this is what we want now. Making us donkeys behind out of sporting is not what we want to do. If we're not going to do positive, we're not going to do anything. There were negative instances that occurred to me once again this month, to the point of public humiliation where I was not forced, but I wasn't assisted properly by an Oklahoma City uniformed armed police officer, enrobing myself entering a public facility, South Community Hospital. I've lost weight, and if you can tell by the lot, notches in my belt, I've lost weight. If I don't have my belt on, my trousers will fall. I request, I went to the, I got arrested on municipal charges, went to the detention center, and they turned me away because my blood pressure was so high that they wouldn't take me. The uniformed police officer denied my request to have my belt and my boots. Walking in my socks didn't bother me. Walking without my belt, I told him, my pants going to fall down. I was, I walked into the emergency room in my underwear. In his narrative of his police report, he states that I kicked my pants or knocked them down. I told him they were going to fall. The officer at the detention center is a corporal. He knows me. If we need to, we will respond to these people and investigate and have them answer. That's not what we want to do. I apologize to every person they are in there. Just so happened, the physician that treated me knows me because he's treated my wife. I asked him, I said, "Well, in the United States Constitution, can you find a clause where I have to take medical treatment to be incarcerated on a municipal offense?" Neg- Negative, I'm done. Now, I'm at the end.
We've gone, okay, we've gone pa- way past three minutes. Is there action you want us to take, or something?
Yes, yes. I need somebody to do this. Commit to me, because I've got a thing that I wrote out, a request for an appointment, and then when I got it back, after two weeks, I wrote a note on there that this is not acceptable to us in my, in my set, because it wasn't. No one contacted me. This is it. This is it. This is it. All the negatives, it's done. Uh, my wife is to the point to where our homicidal residences have been separated because she's ill, and it's no problem, because it's not, it's not, nothing that, you know, out of ordinary, thirty-one years this happens. But I want someone to commit to me before closing this today, because I have a court of, a court appearance tomorrow and a court appearance today concerning the arrest that I just described, where I was humiliated publicly by walking in the place in my underwear. I need a commitment, because those two bags, that's what Dateline's looking for, and everybody know Dateline is looking for me, because I sent them some information anonymously through an anonymous account. What my names are, they verified the fact that it's for real. So I appreciate you. Uh, I'm not going to be disrespectful, uh, mayor. Vice, see, in this position, you're vice mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Roy.
Can I?
No, afterwards. Thanks. Roger.